Yeah.
Just turn on the mic. So go ahead.
Or just, ah, there we go. So I'm coming through OK. All right, just normal voice.
Let us know when you're ready, Mayor.
OK. Gina, you're all set? MCTV? City Clerk? OK, City Council. Good evening and welcome to Milbury City Council of Tuesday, November 28th. City Clerk, could you please do roll call?
Councilmember Pappin.
Here.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Here.
Councilmember Fung.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Present.
All members of City Council are present.
And if everyone who can stand, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And it is my honor to get to read our first land acknowledgement, although Park and Rec and Milbury Bike and Pedestrian Committee have already done this. Land acknowledgement. The Milbury City Council acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral, traditional, and contemporary homeland of the Ramaitush Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We wish to pay our respects to the ancestors and the relatives of the Ramaitush community and to affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples. We recognize that the Ramaitush Aloni have lived in harmony with nature for millennia and that to achieve a truly ecologically sustainable future for Milbury, we must embrace indigenous, traditional, ecological knowledge in how we care for the city's lands, waters, and all of its people. We will continue to uplift and foster a meaningful relationship with the Ramaitush Aloni community, and we encourage all to visit www.ramaitush.org to learn more about the Ramaitush Aloni people. First up, ceremonial presentation. We are going to hear Hip Housing on their Community Calendar Contest presentation. And do we have Diane Whittaker? Ms. Whittaker, please join us. And I should say, board member, Diane Whittaker.
I have to start with saying, this is so exciting to be here. I have never been in your council chambers before.
We also have mics that like you to be a little bit close.
A little bit closer. OK. Going to need these. Good evening, Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor Mr. Goodman, and Councilmembers Cahalan, Fung, and Pappin. My name is Diane Whittaker, and I am a proud board member of Hip Housing, having joined the HHDC Board 22 years ago. Tonight, I would like to share something fun. Since 1972, Hip Housing has been helping low-income San Mateo County residents to find and maintain housing in one of the most expensive places to live in the county. Hip Housing is listed in all 21 housing elements in San Mateo County, including yours, as a trusted affordable housing partner. Last year, we worked with over 3,200 individuals and housed 1,241 people throughout the county. In Milbury alone, we received 42 inquiry calls this year. We currently work with a total of 49 people here, helping to house five individuals through our home sharing program and a young family through our self-sufficiency program. On behalf of Hip Housing, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the members of the Milbury City Council for your enduring support of our organization. As a symbol of our appreciation of your partnership, I'm here tonight to present you with Hip Housing's 2014 calendar. It says in parentheses, bold, "This is the fun part." Each year, Hip Housing asks children from around the county, in grades kindergarten through fifth, to draw pictures of home and tell us what home means to them. This year, we had over 320 calendar entries, and from these entries, we selected 13 winners, 12 for each of the months of the year, and one for the front cover. My favorite month this year is February. Where to show it? Here. And this was drawn by Grayson, a first grader in Foster City. And Grayson's quote reads, "My home is a special place that all of my family can feel comfortable and loved. When I get older, I will build this home that my mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, aunts, uncles, and cousins can all live together, so we can play and take care of each other." I picked this as my favorite because it has four front entry doors, which I thought was very creative. We hope you enjoy the calendar and that it serves as a beautiful reminder throughout the year of how important housing is to everyone in our county, especially our children. More information about Hip Housing's programs and our calendar contests can be found on our website at www hiphousing.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council? Before you step away, I'll add a question, just for the public out there watching. The reason that I will someday be a Hip household once my mom at 96 passes is they help you match people with like personalities and skills on that. They take all of the work out of finding a tenant or a person to come move into your home, however that will be, and I think it's just a fabulous program. And I'm grateful for you for 22 years of being on the board and for all the service that Hip Housing has. People of Milbury, if you have that extra room and you need a little bit of help with the house or someone to talk to, this is a great program for you. It can help our seniors at home and help bring people in or people that just need a little bit more, they just want somebody around on that. And they can make lovely matches, and they do all the work for you.
They do all the work, which includes matching you with a suitable partner and also setting up the contract that you, the two individuals or more, will sign, their agreement.
So I'm hoping somebody who likes to garden and grow tomatoes, that's on my wish list. Thank you so much.
All right.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, no, I appreciate the work that you do with Hip and your leadership, not just through this program with the calendar, but when you look through the faces of the individual, these young kids that's impacted by the work of Hip, I'd just like to say, I too was a beneficiary of Hip Housing while I was in college as a father. And that has always informed the lens in which I govern, the lens in which I support projects like Home Key, the La Quinta project, and other projects that support families and create opportunities to live here in the Bay Area, which is very expensive. And so you have to create programs, and you have to have supportive programs, and going beyond just the calendar, going beyond just the home sharing program, but the other programs of self-sufficiency and the supportive programs that you provide to individuals here in Milbury and beyond San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, and happy holidays. All right, next up, we have San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, Milbury Police Bureau Annual Report, and we are lucky to have with us tonight our Milbury Sheriff Chief Ayman Allen.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider and Vice Mayor Goodman, City Council. Before I present my annual report, I'd like to go briefly off script to recognize one of our Milbury deputies who is doing fantastic work and was just yesterday recognized with the Medal of Life Saving from the Sheriff's Office. So Deputy Luis Ayala, if you'd join me, please. Go, buddy. All right. On September 16, 2023, at approximately 6:38 PM, deputies were dispatched to a medical aid call at the Magnolia of Milbury, 201 Chadbourne Avenue, on a report of an 84-year-old conscious male not breathing who was actively choking in the dining room. Just a minute later, Deputy Ayala arrived, the first responder on scene. Deputy Ayala rushed inside and found a community dining room full of dozens of elderly guests and resident medical staff who looked on as the male victim lay on the floor. The victim's face was blue, and he was no longer conscious. As the victim's wife of decades sobbed uncontrollably only 10 feet away, Deputy Ayala quickly assessed the victim and took control of the scene. Within moments, he administered the Heimlich maneuver and using a finger sweep cleared the victim's unsecured dentures and removed two pieces of beef that were blocking his throat. Deputy Ayala had the presence of mind to delegate a staff member to go outside to usher in EMS when they arrived. He then refocused back to the victim, placing him in a recovery position and applying back blows. Deputy Ayala confirmed the victim had a pulse when EMS arrived on scene. Deputy Ayala delivered pertinent medical information as EMS took over. Using a specialized instrument, they removed yet another obstruction. After several minutes, the victim was breathing again on his own, his pulse was stronger, and his color came back. EMS transported the victim to the hospital for additional treatment. During the event, the victim's wife continued to sob hysterically. Once EMS took over care of her husband, Deputy Ayala consulted her and kept her apprised of her husband's status. He was able to calm her down and even got her to smile as her husband was wheeled away by the medics. She thanked Deputy Ayala many times for what he did. Although the above actions of Deputy Ayala fall within the scope of our deputies as San Mateo County Sheriff, or excuse me, our duties as San Mateo County Sheriff's deputies, his immediate actions and application of his training truly helped give this victim a chance to live. His calm demeanor and empathy afterwards is a shining example of what a deputy should be, a human being behind the badge who displayed kindness and clearly practiced dignity, compassion, and respect. For these actions, he has been awarded the Sheriff's Medal of Life Saving. So please help me in recognizing Deputy Ayala. If you don't mind, words? You good? All right. He's a man of few words, and he's on duty tonight, as is the rest of his team, so they're going to get out and go patrol the streets. But if you wouldn't mind, would it be possible to get a quick picture?
Sure.
City Council, thank you for allowing me to just take time to recognize some of our deputies who are just doing really fantastic work and serving our residents of Milbury here. So for those of you that I haven't met, my name is Ayman Allen. I'm the Chief of Police Services for the City of Milbury. I am not Sheriff Christina Corpus, but it is her office, so we always recognize her. Next slide, please. This is our annual report. For awareness, just a brief breakdown of what the Milbury Police Bureau looks like. I am the chief. I have four patrol sergeants that work for me. They each have a variety of deputies, motor units, canines, et cetera, and my talented management analyst, Val over here, who actually helped me with this presentation. So thank you ahead of time, Val. If there's misspellings, they're my fault. That didn't catch them, not hers. Next slide, please. So calls for service, we had 16,500 calls for service the last year. That's slightly down from the year before, a couple thousand. We've seen resident-initiated calls go up while deputy-initiated calls have gone down. Our response times for Part 1 crimes, or forgive me, they're not called Part 1 crimes anymore. In the past couple of years, we've changed what used to be the standard FBI UCR reporting for crimes now to CIBRIS, which is the California Incident-Based Reporting System. So now we now have, instead of Part 1, Part 2, 1P, 2P. The 4P, as you see, it's a nine-minute response time. Those are low priority calls, parking dogs, parking compliance, et cetera. Next slide, please. So for crimes reported, Group A, again, these are what used to be Part 1, now they're called Group A. Those are serious violent felonies or more serious felonious property crimes. We took 2,000 reports last year. 543 Group A crimes reported, and 216 of those were cleared by arrest and prosecution. 624 misdemeanor arrests, 27 DUI, 790 total arrests in the City of Milbury last year. We consistently are the busiest patrol bureau within the Sheriff's Office, both for reports taken, calls for service, arrests made, and citations. This past year, we wrote just under 4,000 moving citations in the City of Milbury and just over 7,000 parking citations. Next slide, please. Again, as we moved away from the Part 1 crimes, and those are the violent offenses, including murder, sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault, and the more serious property crimes, including burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson. But our quote-unquote "less serious crimes" by the FBI, those are simple assaults, forgery, there's quite a list there, so you can tell I'm not going to go through all of them. Next slide, please. So this is a breakdown of the violent crime from our prior year. As you can see, month to month, we did have one homicide, a woman who was run over in a parking lot. We're fortunate that we have had no homicides this year. As you can see, overall, the number of crimes are relatively low. Next slide, please. That's remained the same here in the most recent fiscal year, 2022, 2023. There have been some brief spikes, but again, spikes are on the order of two or three sometimes. You know, domestic violence, we saw in November, a little spike, really no rhyme or reason for that, but there was a brief spike. Next slide, please. Property crime remains down with the extent, excuse me, with the exception of shoplifting. We have had some brief spikes. I am happy to report that the spikes, I'm sorry, can you go to the next slide, please? We could talk about this year. So some of the spikes, you'll see, like in March 2023, we had a brief spike in auto burglary, for instance, with 27 in a month. That was a result of one day's actions, and those were the subjects that were actually caught on Green Hills Golf Course. So those crimes were all cleared. Crime remains, for the most part, low. Again, we do have a consistent problem with shoplifting, which does generally correlate to non-Milbury residents that arrive here on transit or via El Camino. Next slide, please. So with this slide, you'll see the lighter blue is the prior year, dark blue is this year. Again, no homicides, sexual assaults, flat, a brief spike in robbery. The vast majority of these can be attributed to what we call Estus robberies, where somebody does go to shoplift, and they are confronted, and there's a brief physical interaction. That is considered a robbery. But very low amount of armed robberies, I'm happy to report. Again, aggravated assaults down, burglary down, commercial burglary down, residential burglary down, auto theft down. We are seeing that spike in shoplifting, which we are taking steps to combat, including working with the state with their recent organized retail theft grant. We anticipate a great deal of funding coming to Milbury because it is an issue here. Motor vehicle theft, for the most part, is flat, arson's flat, a brief uptick in vandalism, and then domestic violence is flat. Next slide, please. As far as arrests, the prior year, we made 509 total arrests. This year, we're at 790, and the vast majority of those are misdemeanor arrests. We do clear quite a bit of the shoplifting arrests, so that is up. And then felony arrests is up as well. Next slide, please. Crime clearance from, you can see the light blue is the prior year clearance rates. We are up 16%, which is a good thing. Violent crimes, we are right around 81%, which is fantastic that we're clearing four out of every five violent crimes that occur in the City of Milbury. And that we are also clearing property crimes. That is up as well. Next slide, please. So some of the steps taken beyond the deputies. For those of you that aren't familiar with the Sheriff's Office, excuse me, Sheriff's Office Psychiatric Emergency Response Team, or PERT, a little shorter way to say it. PERT is a clinician and deputies that go to calls where they traditionally follow up on a lot of the 5150 calls or psychiatric emergency calls. Maybe we go to an incident where there's not necessarily Maybe we go to an incident where there's not necessarily, doesn't rise to the level of placing a hold on somebody, but there is a need for psychiatric assistance. We will tag those for follow-up with PERT. As you can see, in the city of Millbrae, last year, they had 98 contacts, 57 5150s, and then a great deal of referrals, interviews. Some of those were via family and then some via deputy. Next slide, please. Some of the saturation measures. We identified early on that one of the routes of ingress to this, to our city for folks, especially when it comes to lower-level property crime, narcotics use, is through our Transit Center. So we've been doing for the past six months or so, high-visibility patrols at Caltrain, at BART. More recently, we've seen an uptick in BART's assistance there, so that's a good thing. But we were there, I hate to say it, but we were there before they were. So just working to keep the city safe. We're also working at our schools. Traffic safety is paramount with our schools, especially in the morning. And we've identified, we've gone out, done some Safe Route to School meetings, and identified some areas where we can improve our enforcement, which we're doing, and then also working with the city to do some traffic calming, improve traffic safety. Next slide, please. Just some highlights. I wouldn't call welcoming me here a highlight, but I, just and again, my management analyst put that in there. I am new. I've been here, it'll be about a year in, it'll be a year in January, which is kind of crazy. It's gone very fast. But it's been a great year, and I'm very fortunate to be here. We had, I tell our city manager and our city council and anybody who will listen, from the moment I got here, I've wanted the best personnel, whether that was deputies, sergeants, et cetera. Millbrae deserves the best. And I know there's a great push to have community policing and continuity in the city, which I certainly appreciate. Unfortunately, when you have the best, they sometimes get pulled away, whether they get promoted or they get selected for specialty assignments. We're still working to have that continuity. But again, our people are getting promoted, they are getting selected for specialty assignments, which is a good thing. We had one sergeant promote to lieutenant. We had a motor deputy complete his Inter Perspectives class, which is a route to being promoted. We just had a CSO promote to Correctional Officer. We welcomed a new K-9, which is fantastic, that one of our deputies was selected for a K-9. And we also just lost one of our deputies to be the motor in the town of Woodside. So hopefully, we can get another motor unit soon, and we'll pull him back, because he's a great cop. Next slide, please. That is me there in the mask on the right side. That was a national night out. As far as community engagement, we're working closely again with all the schools, major city events, festival season, as we call it. I tell people all the time, it's fantastic as policing or as law enforcement to be wanted at those kind of events. And we are very fortunate in this city. Not every city enjoys that relationship, so we always count our blessings that we are appreciated and we are wanted at those sorts of things. So we don't take that lightly. We are at every event, work closely with the city, have fantastic partners within the city, and then that Downtown Foot Patrol. Yeah, again, national night out, some community engagement photos. Next slide, please. This was a day at the rec. We did, I think it was a hero's day or some kind of a day with the kids' summer camp here in Millbrae. So they asked us to come speak, and that was a fantastic day liaising with the kids. One made fun of me. My feelings are still hurt, but that's okay. Next slide, please. September 11th, with our fire partners, we did a tremendous start to the morning there, just recognizing their service and their fallen brothers and sisters, 9/11. Next slide, please. Just more community engagement. I like to have as many conversations with folks I can. That's my favorite part of the job. It's not crunching numbers or, you know, writing evaluations. It's talking to the people. So we had a great turnout for coffee with the chief, and look forward to having some more of those events here in the near future. Here's my contact information. My door is always open. Please, by all means, shoot me an email. Another shameless plug, but if you want to follow me on Nextdoor, I'm okay about putting stuff on Nextdoor. I'm gonna get better, but that's an important way to liaise with the community. So please, by all means, reach out and follow on Nextdoor. And that's all I have. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. City Manager?
Well, Mayor, just gonna add, you know, it's a pleasure working with Chief Allen, since he's come on board. Of course, Valerie's been a mainstay, but it's been a great pleasure, and the partnership just continues to get stronger. One thing that he missed was the ice cream social that you hosted out at Central Park. We were out there and probably 100 kids.
It was a lot, yeah.
If not more. Big smiles on their face. Sheriff's Department, the chief hosted Mr. Softy out there. See the smiling kids' faces and the little soccer game and flag football game or touch football game broke out. So just, that was another thing. It was just a great community event that was well-attended, so. But Chief, it's a pleasure, and thank you for the great work.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Counsel, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions regarding some of the different reporting around, like, human trafficking. Where would that fit on the report, if at all?
It would. So human trafficking is a crime, and we do investigate those cases. So I was a partner with the Human Trafficking Coordinator for about six months in the last year, and human trafficking is a different, excuse me, is a difficult issue because it's sort of the crime that hides in plain sight. And speaking with our district attorney, he's only prosecuted, he's only had those cases cross his desk two to three times over the last year or two. So it is an issue that we know is occurring. Our Street Crimes Unit has done massage parlor stings in the city of Millbrae. Not any recently. We haven't had the tips that we normally rely on, so I hope that it's not occurring, those kind of issues. But it is a case that we take serious, a crime that we take seriously, and do partner with the Human Trafficking Coordinator when we have reason to believe those things are occurring. But unfortunately, we're not, we're not getting the information right now, or I would hope that it's, we're deterring it, but it is an issue that we're aware of and we're always on the lookout for.
Okay, and then also, like, drug sales. I know with the opioid crisis, has there been any movement made, or do you have anything to report, report out on whether it's illegal drug sales, illegal grow houses, things like that here within the city of Millbrae? Are we doing anything proactive to kind of engage the community on being aware of things like that?
We can probably do a better job with engaging the community, because there are warning signs, lookout specifically for grow houses, you know, uncommon foot traffic. With any issue within the community, we like to say, see something, say something. You know who belongs on your street and who doesn't. If you see something, trust your instincts. If you think it, and if you know what, it's somebody that got a flat tire, we'll come talk to them, and if they got a flat tire, we'll help them out, get them a tow truck, send them on their way. But if it is something more nefarious, we certainly want to know about it. So I would say that's with the grow houses. We haven't seen a lot of that activity in the city of Millbrae. The same goes for narcotics sales. The state of California has limited our ability to enforce certain measures when it comes to drugs. You see a lot more, what used to be a felony is now a misdemeanor. The vast majority of the narcotics we see are either fentanyl or methamphetamine. We do know that the tenderloin is the fentanyl epicenter of the western United States. So the, we believe that the vast majority is coming from the city, coming down on public transportation. We don't see a lot of sales case, even the greater kind of size, or we don't see any, like, real serious quantities that you would associate with. The vast majority is personal use.
Okay.
So, but we're always on the lookout for that, and we do have close relationships, as you know, with San Mateo County Narcotics Task Force. We have deputies and sergeants that are at the task force. They're only a phone call away if we do have reason to believe there is a more serious movement of narcotics.
Right. And that is obviously a concern of ours, you know, as with the BART and other public transportation. You can walk out on El Camino anytime after, let's say, 10 or 11 o'clock at night, and you'll see individuals slumped over, not as bad as it is in the tenderloin, but it's been seen. And so I just wanted to make sure of that. And then on the grow houses, are there any technologies that could be utilized to, where you could see whether it's infrared or rate spikes, things like that, where you could kind of get tipped off to people that are actually doing it well? Not saying that it's being done here in Millbrae, but just to make sure that, hey, we're prepared and we're ready as a city to make sure that, you know, it doesn't create any other hazards within our community.
Sure. So the rate, or, excuse me, the spikes in usage of power are actually one of the biggest telltale signs, and we get that information from utilities, you know, and that's probably the biggest thing we're looking for. As far as infrared, there's actually case law that you're not allowed to do it. As much as we'd like to go by and scan houses, if you can't kind of observe it with the naked eye from the street, you need a warrant for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then lastly, you know, there's, you know, there's rightful concerns of residents here around anti-Asian hate, senior issues with our seniors. Have we have any reporting on hate crimes here in the city of Millbrae that we could report out on and probably just make us all aware of what we should be or could be doing to address it and alleviate it?
So we don't get a lot of hate crime activity reported. It's certainly always something that we need to be aware of and mindful of when dealing with. We're fortunate here to have a very diverse population, and that's one of the things that makes Millbrae a fantastic city to live and work in, to visit. We don't get a lot of those reports, but it is something we take seriously. You know, anti-hate campaigns are always important. You know, we have the anti-hate, we stand against hate signs throughout the city, and that's important, to always be mindful of being respectful of our neighbors. But we don't get a lot of those reported. But we will certainly take it very seriously if it's something we hear about.
All right. And then lastly, elder abuse. Are we working with the county and the county's Office of Services, oh, I forget the Support Services, but addressing and responding to risk of elder abuse of our residents? We do have a community of a lot of elderly individuals and making sure that they're not getting abused or financially or any other way.
So we do have close relationships with Adult Protective Services, and they, we usually get the referrals from them or work hand-in-hand with them in lockstep if we do get that information. Our deputies are well-trained in both physical as well as financial elder abuse, and that is something, again, that we're fortunate, we don't experience a lot. We have had, you know, select cases here and there, but we do have expertise within our detective bureau that follows up on that along with Adult Protective Services.
Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Counsel? Counsel, what happened?
Thank you, Kevin. So real quick, you did mention BART. Has the situation changed in any way, shape, or form there? Can you let us know what's happening?
So I was fortunate enough to have a good conversation ahead of APEC Conference. For those of you that haven't been following it, the Asian Pacific Economic, what's the last word? Yeah, it's economic, I forget what the last, the C in APEC stands for, but it's basically heads of state cooperating throughout the Pacific Rim to improve economies. It was a big deal in the city. We did anticipate some issues with San Francisco kind of clearing their city and seeing an influx on BART. I'm happy to say we did not, actually, that did not actually materialize. I had a conversation with two deputy chiefs from BART a couple weeks before that, and that was good for just clearing the air and building the lines of communication. It's my understanding that BART has effectively doubled their ridership with their officers on trains, and we think that's helping, because we really didn't see the influx that we expected. We were prepared to do operations at the Transit Center, increased Faravator operations both at BART and Caltrain, and we just never really saw the influx that would have necessitated that.
Great. Now, San Francisco, correct me if I'm wrong, they pass a new ordinance regarding, regarding distribution or sale of fentanyl? And has that in any way?
In San Francisco?
Yeah. Did I hear something about that?
I'm sorry, I'm not super up to date on San Francisco.
All right. No, I had heard they increased the penalty so that the, any sales around the Civic Center would be prosecuted and more so.
I would hope all the sales would be prosecuted.
Yes, exactly.
I'm not always so lucky.
Exactly.
We were fortunate to live in San Mateo County.
We are indeed. So I only knew one grow house back when, but everybody can grow their own now, so it's not really a big issue.
In moderation.
In moderation, absolutely true. Well, thank you and all of your deputies for all your service. It's greatly appreciated. And the visibility, we are seeing them, and I think that's really the biggest deterrent that we can have. So thank you for all your hard work and efforts, and anything we can do to help, just let us know. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I just wanna, I just wanna thank Chief Allen and your entire team. You know, the fact that you shared a moment ago, you know, our community is very welcoming to our law enforcement officers and our deputies, and, you know, you're practically at just about every major festivals we have in our city. And that goes to show that how our community value the importance of strong and good public safety, right? And how our residents value and trust our public safety officers, which is, you know, just as you mentioned a moment ago, this, this relationship gets stronger every day and integrated into the fabrics of our community that makes our community strong and safer. So I appreciate all your work and your partnership on all of this. Thank you so much on your entire team. A couple of quick questions. Any update on the bike and foot patrol officer that we talked about and being able, that we want to make available to the downtown and the transit area?
Sure. So we have a downtown unit that is staffed solely on overtime at the moment. I will say that overtime signups are being a bit impacted. It's no secret, we're going through a bit of a staffing crisis at the moment, and we're working, the sheriff is working very hard, dedicating resource to recruiting and retention. We currently have 170 either deputies or correctional officers in the pipeline to be hired. Traditionally, we only hire about 40% of that, but even 40% of 170 will put a nice dent in our staffing shortage. Just because we don't, that's not staffed on overtime, doesn't mean we don't have folks walking downtown and liaising with the business. We are pushing hard to increase those overtime signups, but at the moment, it's being impacted. I anticipate after the first of the year, we just hired seven new deputies yesterday. We're gonna hire another six or seven in December. So with those numbers, I anticipate that signup will be much more robust, and we'll have that dedicated unit again very soon.
Excellent. Thank you. Another quick question is, we discussed having a secondary police outpost closer to the transit area. Any update on that?
Sure. So I'm working closely with the city manager. Our initial thoughts, the cost was a little exorbitant, and I think they wanted $850,000 to move the trailers, which as you, that's a pretty significant investment. So that was kind of, I don't know, for me, didn't make the most sense. But we're still looking into other avenues and other funding sources to get maybe perhaps a smaller outpost there. We'll continue to work on that, but just because we don't have that doesn't mean we're not gonna dedicate a significant amount of resources to that point of ingress.
I see. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
I don't have any questions. I just, I thank you for all of the work that you all are doing. You know, I've been in Millbrae for 21 years, and, you know, out and about in the community, I've heard a lot over the years of people saying they haven't really felt the presence or the relationship, and, you know, in the past, they, they knew our officers, and they were part of the community. But in this last year, people, I'm hearing a change in the community and people really feeling the presence and getting to know you and other members of your team, and I think it's really making a difference in, in that sense of community and people's safe, feeling of safety. So thank you so much for all of you and the whole team's work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Again, Chief, thank you for everything, and to all the deputies, a couple of quick questions. San Francisco has just shut down the open-air markets where a lot of the organized shoplifting theft has gone. Do we think we, are we ready to track if we're gonna see a reduction in the shoplifting? Do we think we, are we ready to track if we're going to see a reduction in the shoplifting here based on that or any other open shoplifting?
Sorry, can you?
Sorry.
No, you're all right. So you're asking if we anticipate a reduction in shoplifting based on their shutting down the?
That open air place around, in the greater Mission area. It wasn't just one location. And they're moving all of the certified businesses to an indoor location in a way to try to stop the, what is the term when you're selling stolen goods?
Fencing.
The, the outdoor fencing operations.
It's hard to quantify exactly what that change might be. You know, we have the, like I mentioned earlier, the, the money from the organized retail theft grant that we plan on putting to good use, both with staffing operations as well as tools, perhaps some more flock cameras in town that have been a fantastic tool for us. It's hard to say exactly what those relationships, what those measures will take off the table as far as our organized retail theft. My experience has been when you're working in illicit goods, they will find someplace else to do that, maybe perhaps less in public view. They're pretty brazen about it in San Francisco. So my hope is that it would reduce it, but we'll be prepared either way.
And again, just so the public can hear that, because the paper reported that they got grants to the cities that have the big shopping malls, but because we're part of the Sheriff's Department, we also receive money to work on organized shoplifting theft, which is fantastic. This is a question I kind of bring up every time because we're a transit hub, and I am worried about children who are leaving home and can get picked up for human trafficking. Do we collect any data? Do we need any special assistance out there to make sure we've, we're doing that extra mile? I know we're doing the extra mile, but an extra, extra mile for young people because what I've read, if we can keep them, if we can get them housed within the first 30 days or something, their chances of having a successful life are hugely greater on that. So that's always a worry that I have, that we're right next to SFO, we're a train station, we're all of this, and I wouldn't know if I'd know how to pick up the signs. And maybe we need some education on that, all the public to know, given our transportation orientation here, how to look for somebody who might be a person that needs a little help.
Sure. So our human trafficking coordinator actually does a fantastic job of that, and she just set up the, in late September, the Day of Action for Human Trafficking, where they were working in transit hubs but also hotels, and the hotels actually have to have a human trafficking, essentially a poster of what to look for, what human trafficking may look like. But I can work on receiving some of that information, perhaps putting it on Nextdoor, working with Justine Bleeker, the PIO, about getting some of that in our social media so that it can be pushed out to all of our residents so they know what to look for.
I would think that's great, and we always need that, you know, extra training in that for our new council members when the football game.
Super Bowl.
Super Bowl.
The Super Bowl came, those of us who are on council, we got training on how to identify human trafficking because it goes up so much with these big sporting events. Thankfully, Taylor Swift did not bring that in, so, you know, we didn't have to worry about that.
Well, then we have the World Cup and the Super Bowl coming back, so.
So it would be good to get that training in there. And then just for the public, the Sheriff's Department is the one place collecting data right now for a new law that says if you're riding your bicycle and a car comes within three feet of you, you can collect that data. So Chief, can you tell us a little bit so we can try to keep our cyclists safer?
Sure. So the three-foot rule is a fantastic program where if a vehicle does come within three feet of a cyclist, we can actually take enforcement action on that vehicle. What it does require, though, is a license plate and some photo evidence, so, you know, I don't know, it's been a long time since I had a GoPro, but I don't know how expensive those are these days, but just for public safety, if you're riding with a GoPro, that's a good tool as well to get that information and, which can lead to our actually taking action against that driver. So, but it's certainly a good program to step in the right direction. It's not a be all, end all, but it's certainly a step in the right direction towards cyclist safety.
And it's another thing that makes us unique by being part of the Sheriff's Department. They are the one policing entity in Samhitahtown County collecting that data, so it's great. And the last piece of really fabulous news that you left out, the puppy that came to the Sheriff Activity League fundraiser that is the therapy dog.
Yeah.
When can we see the puppy again?
I will see if she's available, maybe perhaps come to a city.
You want to tell the, the public a little bit more about what the purpose is of that puppy?
Sure. So the therapeutic, I'm a dog person, for those of you that aren't, the therapeutic, sometimes if you come to my office, you'll find my three-year-old Dixie. She's a three-year-old lab pit mix, likes to sit on the couch. But the therapeutic benefits of dogs have been found, especially for victims of abuse, but certainly children as well are just, they're through the roof. So we recently just got a therapy dog that will be a full-time school resource officer, so it'll be in the schools and certainly available to, if needed, for victims of abuse. So it's a fantastic program, I think. She has her dog now, Deputy Martinez, who's one of our young, strong deputies, who has actually helped us with a recent high-profile case here in Millbrae as a decoy. So fantastic young deputy, and that'll be a great program as well.
Excellent. Well, thank you, and thank you to all the deputies out there and to all support staff. Valerie, you know, I'm a fan, so there we go. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Moving on to agenda item number two, agenda overview and staff briefing. City Manager.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. I will move to the third bullet point and report out from November 28th closed session. There is no reportable action from this evening's closed session. Moving on, are you ready? We're, we're a busy city here, the month of, month of December. But first and foremost, I'd like to bring to everyone's attention that the city will be again hosting our Citizens Academy. It's our second Citizens Academy, and we will be kicking that off February 22nd. This is a free six-session program designed to help Millbrae residents to learn more about their government. The sessions are held over a three-month period of time. We're trying to get them on a Wednesday, Thursday schedule. But the academy, it's an excellent opportunity for the community to become familiar with the various functions and services of local government. Participants will hear from all the department heads that present about their respective operations to our facilities and really get a behind-the-scenes look at how the city operates. Space is limited to 35 people, and that's the program capacity, and it'll become, it will be filled on a first-come, first-served basis. Participants must be at least 18 years old and must be a Millbrae resident. So starting, actually, December 5th, people can log on to our website, and the enrollment for the next Citizens Academy will commence. So that's December 5th, so that's coming up here, I believe that's next Monday. Also, Central County Fire Department is hosting its annual toy drive. This is to help to ensure all children in Samhitahtown County have a gift to open this holiday season. They set up collection barrels at all CCFD, Central County Fire Department fire stations, including both the Millbrae Fire Stations. People can drop off new unwrapped toys at Fire Station Number 37, which is 511 Magnolia Avenue, just right here next to City Hall, or Fire Station 38, which the address is 785 Crestview Drive. There's also collection barrels here in the lobby of City Hall and at the Recreation Center. So anything anyone can give is appreciated, and just in advance, we thank everyone for their kindness and generosity. Also, Millbrae Community Foundation, every year they have their annual hand-painted holiday stars that people can contribute to. The Millbrae Community Foundation, for the donation, MCF, thanks everyone that does contribute, buy personalized hand-painted stars that are hung on the city holiday tree out in front of City Hall. Verbiage on the stars can be anything from honoring someone, or they can, you can simply have your own message. So to make a donation, you can log on to the foundation's website, which is www.millbreyfoundation.org. So again, www.millbreyfoundation.org. Also, a number of events coming up Saturday, December 2nd. We're hosting that this Saturday. Pictures with Santa at the gazebo, which is out on Library Lane on the other side of the library. So people can come by and take pictures with Mr. and Mrs. Claus at the gazebo, starting at 2:00 PM, and that will be for two hours from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. After that, then people are free to head over to City Hall for our annual holiday tree lighting celebration, which will begin at 5:00 PM. There'll be cookies, hot chocolate, candy canes, holiday music, and a sing-along. So it's a great event for everyone in town. That's 5:00 PM this Saturday out in front of City Hall for our tree lighting and festivities. Friday, December 8th, the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, they have their first gallery art reception. So the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee will present a reception for artist Matt Christensen. He is a high school art teacher at Mills. The reception is from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM, and again, it's at the Community Recreation Center. So anyone that is interested, please come and meet the artist himself, answer questions, view the beautiful artwork, and, and, and help kick off our very first visiting art gallery. Then right after that, starting at 6:30 PM, also at the Recreation Center, is Millbrae Goes to the Movies. We're showing Dr. Seuss's Grinch that will be inside the Recreation Center in the Great Room, starting at 6:30. So nice event on Friday evening, December 8th, at the Recreation Center. The following day, December 9th, is the Millbrae Education Foundation's Holiday Boutique. So MEF will be hosting its Holiday Boutique, again, Saturday, December 9th. This will be at the Millbrae Recreation Center, also in the Great Hall, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So everyone be sure to come, check it out, there'll be local vendors, enjoy some holiday cheer, and support Millbrae Education Foundation. And then Tuesday, December 12th, is the swearing-in for the mayor and vice mayor. After that swearing-in ceremony, we will also be hosting our year-end 75th anniversary celebration, so that will start somewhere between 7:30 and 8:30 after the formal council meeting. So we're, we're pleased to invite the entire community to our year-end appreciation gala to celebrate our 75th anniversary. There'll be food, local performances by local community organizations, and so it is going to be a great event there on December 12th. And then lastly, as I've been keeping the council up to date, our major, one of our major pavement projects, we just laid 43,000 cubic feet of asphalt today. I have a few pictures. This wraps up our Lincoln Circle paving, which we also, following the One Dig policy of the city council, installed new water line, a new sewer line, storm line, also a purple pipe from the park to Richmond Drive. Richmond Drive is, is for a future planned recycled water main that once we get our recycled water up and running, we'll have the purple pipe in the ground to bring up Richmond and then obviously deliver to, to Central Park there, and then also actually the fields at, at Taylor Middle School. So here are some pictures real quick. This paving happened today. They were able to do it in one day, so this, these are just some photos of, that's more than an acre or right around an acre of asphalt. So it was great. This street, you're probably familiar with it. I mean, it was in bad shape, a lot of alligatoring, a lot of potholes. It's heavily used, a lot of traffic volume because this is a ingress egress for people picking up and dropping off students at Taylor Middle School, obviously with the multifamily housing, the Recreation Center. So just a nice project for the neighborhood, and, and that will be completed by the end of the week, as I mentioned, with the raised crosswalk to, to get from one side of the street into, into the Recreation Center and the Taylor Middle School. So.
Was there interest?
Pardon me?
Underground?
Yeah, all the undergrounding is in. So water, what, main water line, main sewer line, all the lateral connections, storm, all the conduit for electrical, and then the purple pipe to get from the park to, to Richmond. So anyway, so that project will be coming forward to the city council for completion. So that kind of concludes a quick overview, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, the Millbrae Historical Society's Train Museum, I believe is having their, bringing back the Train Museum event on December 2nd, but I don't know the time. It's been a few years since COVID, but the Train Museum opens up. It's for kids. You can go and play in all of the train stuff, and I think there's cookies and snacks down there, and I'm waiting for the city clerk to look that up, but please check our website. I think it's on the website on that. And thank you, City Manager. Yeah, we are busy, and that's only the first half of December. Okay, moving on to agenda item number three, approval of minutes. These are the special meeting minutes of September 1st, 2023. Council comments?
So moved.
Thank you. Got a motion by Councilman Fung. I need a second.
Second.
I think it happened simultaneously. Councilwoman Cahalan, any discussion? City Clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Pavan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The special meeting minutes of September 1st passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next up is agenda item, sorry, I have my Toys for Tots toy here and the Santa hats for Saturday. We're all ready. Next up is four reports from city committee or commission chairs. We have none tonight. Now we're moving on to public communication. This is for any comments from the public on items that are not on tonight's agenda. We will start with those who've handed me paper slips, and then we'll move to Zoom. And first up will be Mr. Norm Turello. Mr. Turello, if you've not been here before, close to the mic, it picks up better for the recording.
Good evening. My name's Norm Turello, and I'm speaking to you tonight about MELP, which stands for Medical Equipment Loan Program. MELP is an all-volunteer nonprofit organization that receives used or no longer needed durable medical equipment from the community, and then after inspecting it, repairing it, cleaning it, loans it out at no cost, free, to anybody that needs it for any length of time that they need it. Loaned equipment includes wheelchairs, transport chairs, rollers, walkers, knee scooters, shower curtains and benches, crutches and canes. MELP loans this equipment to those in need, and the client may keep it for as long as they require it. When it's returned to us, we again inspect it, clean it, and make it available to others, and the cycle continues. Our program has three goals in mind, to help reduce medical equipment inequity. There is so much need, and many times, seniors particularly cannot afford it. We make this equipment available. We improve the quality of life for our clients, and by using the equipment, we keep it out of landfills. That's the other thing, when people finish with the equipment, they don't know what to do with it, it ends up in the dumpster. By making our program known to others, we're encouraging people to donate it to us so that we can make it available to others. Any equipment that can't be re-loaned is disassembled, and the metals and plastic are put into recycling, again, not in the landfill. Now, for this program to work, we need to receive items, and that's where the other part of my speech comes in. On Saturday, December 2nd, we're having a donation drive where we're encouraging people to take the stuff that's been in their garage forever, their attic or basement, and drop it off at First Presbyterian Church, 1500 Easton Drive in Burlingame. That's this coming Saturday from 9:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon. I've left a flyer with each of you. Hopefully you can give it to neighbors. This is pictures of all the things that we like to remember to have people look for. They are the high donation, high-demand items, but we have many specialty items as well, and those are also loaned out for free. And lastly, And lastly, this program and a companion drive that I'll come to speak to you about in January 20th is being put on by a Boy Scout troop, and one of their members is aspiring to gain Eagle rank, and this is their community project. So I wanted--
Mr. Turello, you're beyond--
I'm sorry to be the--
--time. I understand.
We have to treat everyone the same--
I understand.
And as important as this is, we have to provide time for-- So I apologize.
premedequipment.org for more information. Thank you.
Council can't comment on items not on the agenda, but City Clerk, could you, if you didn't get one, could we get this to Justine and have our PIO, Public Information Officer, send this out on that? And I'll keep this one. And next is Bill Clark. Bill?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Again, my name's Bill Clark, and in a few weeks, I will celebrate my 70th year here. I'm here to address safety and health, and although I have emailed Mayor, I felt that I should be in person to address you. And on any given day here, stop signs are mostly tap-and-goes, and sometimes not even that. This morning, while I was on La Cruz, as I stood on the corner, two drivers with their faces in their phone saw me, never saw me, and just tapped and went. I was raised different, that you're supposed to stop, look, make eye contact. It's a lost art, because as much as the drivers are in a hurry, pedestrians with their noses buried in their phones just keep walking. We have e-bikes, bikes, e-scooters flooring around without a care, most with no helmets. None are required to license or insurance as I as an M1 driver. An M1 is a motorcycle license. This afternoon, a young man on a stand-up, and I've seen him before, with a kid no more than four years old, scooting along, no helmet on either. On El Camino, you can count two Mississippis as cars keep coming through the reds. My walks also allow me to see that dog poop may be the new city flower. It's all over. I have a dog. I have a few dogs. Do you know I rode my horse in the Millbry's 50th parade? Do you know what the council's main concern was? Who's going to pick it up? We did. Right now, at the library, there are two bags of poop, one on a pathlight and one within a few feet. One month and counting, it's been sitting there, and you guys only want to pick it up. Parasites alone are a problem in this matter. I understand that there might be money spent downtown. How about some enforcement? As much as it grinds me, how about a poop bag station and more cans? Society is different today. This is all about the generation, the me generation, and me generation may need a reality check. Be a council of proactive, not reactive. As a council, take a walk some morning. I think it's in order. In conclusion, it is just safety, health, and cleanliness. And on a side note, I would like to, ten years ago, when we were talking about dogs, it has nothing to do with, as far as the, what the officer rescued. I have an officer of Millbry then, now sergeant, made entry into my house that was on fire, make sure nobody was there, and he rescued my dog. So with that, I would just, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I have no other slips. Do you have anybody on Zoom?
Mayor, we do have one hands raised. It's Michael Kelly. Would you like me to go ahead and meet him? All right, Mr. Kelly, please go ahead and start.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. It's the Mayor, City Council. My name is Michael Kelly. I've been a resident of Millbry for many weeks now and very proud to be one of the co-founders of the Millbry Anti-Racist Coalition. I just wanted to share my great pleasure in hearing the Mayor talk about the land acknowledgement tonight. I think it was the first time at City Council. I did hear from Dr. Jonathan Cordero, who is the Executive Director of ARO, the Association of Remitra Shaloni. He was so pleased and very appreciative of the update that this got done, especially during Native Heritage Month. So wanted to call that out. In wearing my ARC hat, that was one of the many initiatives we try to bring to the city's attention, and it's great to get something across the line. So just want to share that and Dr. Cordero's appreciation for what the city's done. Also, wearing my ARC hat, I wanted to find out about, you know, we had been notified as a city and ARC that tonight was supposed to be a presentation from EJ Solutions about the committee getting formed for social equity. It was announced that some applications had come in, they extended the date, they got up to 70 applications, and then a lot of information was made known that November 28th would be the night EJS would come in and present their findings. I know the City of Millbry has the Simplicity App. They've got channels. Nothing was forthcoming. It's not on tonight's agenda. Many ARC members, many city residents are asking me and others what happened, where'd this go, when's it been rescheduled for, or is it? So I would just ask that, you know, some better results come around on communicating information. When you announce something's going to happen and then it goes away, that's really challenging for us in the community. So I know it's typically not an interactive session here, and maybe council can't answer. Perhaps somebody on city staff can say, is this in fact going to happen at a meeting in December, or is this now out to 2024? A lot of people would like to know. So those are the couple of comments I've got tonight. The last thing I'll make brief mention of, two weeks ago, I presented my rationale of why I think Councilwoman Pappin should either recuse herself or not be allowed to vote on the committee placement. A lot of people asked me about that. They weren't sure about, you know, the veracity of my statement. So I'm going to share, if you go to YouTube, the MCTV recording of the January 24th City Council meeting at the 3 hour, 43 minute, 22nd minute marker is where Councilwoman Pappin says that members of ARC should not be able to serve on the Social Equity Commission. Anyone that wants that email can send an email to millbryarc@gmail.com, and I'll send you the link. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. City Clerk--
Mayor, just real quick, it's not on the agenda, but for the benefit of the community, so working with EJ Solutions, we extended the application process. We made that announcement to October 31st to try to solicit more non-English-speaking candidates, and so that pushed the timeline. And so working with EJ Solutions, we're going to bring to the Social Equity Subcommittee and then the City Council, probably be in the City Council, first or second meeting in January.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you to the committee. Technically, we don't--
I don't think it's not on the agenda. I would just, for the benefit of the public, I'll look to the city attorney.
You can't discuss the items that they bring up. If you want to instruct staff to do something or ask for something to be looked into--
I'm not discussing an item that is not on the agenda at all. I just want to commend the staff. Usually, we have our agenda out 72 hours before the meeting because of the Thanksgiving holiday. You actually had it done before the holiday, way earlier than the 72-hour legal requirements. I want to commend the staff. They're doing a good job, always keeping all of our agenda public as quickly as possible and informing the public what needs to be discussed. So I want to thank the staff for that.
Thank you, Councilman. With that, do we have any other hands raised on Zoom?
Mayor, we do not.
Okay, closing public comment, moving on to consent calendar. And I am going to be pulling, sorry, City Manager, I forgot to bring that up under your Agenda Overview. I'm going to pull Agenda Item 5 for discussion. If I could, and we have two items remaining on Consent Calendar. Item number six, waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance repealing and replacing Section 5.95.70, Regulation of Methods of Selling Tobacco Products in Chapter 9, I'm sorry, Chapter 5.95, Smoking Control, and this is an action. And Agenda Item Number Seven, Adoption of a Resolution Approving the 2022 Central Park Tennis Court's Rehabilitation Project as Complete and Authorizing the Filing of a Notice of Completion, also an action item.
So moved.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, just six and seven.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. City Clerk, any further discussion? City Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Consent Items Number Six and Seven passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Okay, and I don't, unless staff has a report, the reason I pulled this is we're going to go into both discussion of, or an update of our goals, but also a discussion of the fire assessment. And I think a lot of times, people, the public especially, don't see that we do a monthly report on our general fund. The report is excellent, but, Mr. City Manager, if you've got a staff presentation, I've just got a couple of quick questions for that, but it'll--
There's no staff presentation, Mayor, but we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Then my questions are, what the public may not realize is about 20, sometimes more than 20% of our general fund comes from hotel tax. And if you haven't been following what's happening at SFO and around the Pacific Rim, the flights are coming back from China, the flights are, a bunch of new international flights are coming back, and that is very much in line with our hotels and our TOT. So my question, Mr. Sung, it's probably too soon to see any increase in our TOT, given that they've only just started coming back in the last couple of weeks, but I just wanted to put it on your radar.
Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Honorable Counsel as well. So our TOT revenues actually do mirror very well the flight patterns, I guess, of SFO. SFO is a little bit more unique than most other airports in that about a quarter of the flights are actually international, especially to the Pacific Rim. As the Pacific Rim starts to open up more, you'll see a little bit more activity than the TOT generally trends that direction as well. So that's what we're actually seeing right now. As the increase in more international travel, the TOT is starting to increase a little bit further.
So beginning to bring us back, we're one of the cities that recovered more slowly in hotel tax than other cities because of our unique relationship with SFO, and that is true?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know if that's true. I don't know if we've recovered more slowly. We're recovering, and as Mike said, we're recovering based on airport traffic. I think there are some cities that haven't recovered to the extent that we are. So I need, I think we need to be careful, and we need to do more analysis. We can do that, bring it back. I don't want to jump to conclusions.
It's just that critical relationship that we have with our hotels. And then, and again, I'm guessing that this is too soon because it only happened on November 1st, but La Quinta dropped its shuttle system, and that caused the dropping of the shuttle system to the Millwood and the Fairfield, which in time is one way, it's one of the amenities they offer for customers to come to their hotel. Are we keeping an eye on what that might be doing to the TOT that we recover from those two hotels? And basically, just their success rate for those two hotels? And if not, can we make sure that we're doing that and we can report on it in January? By then, we should maybe be seeing the impact of having lost the hotel shuttle system.
So we are carefully monitoring it. I should mention, as City Manager Williams had alluded to earlier, we are looking at things prospectively moving forward as well as historically going backwards. And in January, we're actually going to come back with year-end numbers for the ACFOR, also known as the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, to report out what last year looked like and what next year's going to kind of look like as we're projecting forward as well. So we'll have a lot more data around that time period.
Excellent. And again, I do like reading this report. I was kind of surprised to see that our grants are, was it 640% of that? So congratulations to staff for all of that. And then my last one, we haven't really talked about this as a City Council in years and years, but as a former board member of Millbry Community Television, I know a lot of their funding comes from a version of a franchise fee. It's the public access fee, the PEG funds on that, and my understanding is those funds are going away, that Comcast and AT&amp;T were required to pay those for a set period of time, and then it's gone. So, and I thought the city got some sort of section or some portion of that money. So for the future, if we can see where that status is, because either MTC is going to lose money, or both of us are going to lose money from that revenue source. So just keep an eye on that. So, and we, this is our chance for the public. Technically, council either talks to the City Manager, this was my chance to get to talk to our Finance Director. And as I said a couple of weeks ago, I used to get people calling me all the time about audits, but they are very comfortable with the financial reports here. So thank you for everything you do. Council, any other questions? If there are no other questions, if I could have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, and actually, thank you, Vice Mayor. Let me read the actual motion. Well, this is informational. Agenda Item Number Five, Receive and File Monthly General Fund Financial Report for the Period Ending October 31st, 2023. So do we need to vote on this or just informationally?
We have to. We have to receive it.
I'm just, we have to receive it?
Yeah, you can vote, receive it.
So we have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from the Councilman. Did I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. City Clerk, if you could call the vote, please.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Fung, Cahalan, excuse me.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The City Council received Item Number Five by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing tonight. We have no public hearings. Moving on to existing business. Agenda Item Number Eight, Waive the First Reading and Introduce an Ordinance Adding Chapter 8.75 Permit Required for Parklets to Title VIII Public Works of the Millbry Municipal Code and Adopt a Resolution Implementing the Parklet Program Guidelines for the Installation and Maintenance of Parklets in the Public Ride-Away. This is an action item. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Community Development Director, Mr. Annie Mogensen, and then our Assistant Planner, Jennifer Lim, that's been working very hard on this ordinance for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Snyder and members of the City Council. I'm Jennifer Lim, Assistant Planner with the City of Millbry, and tonight I'll be presenting the parklet item. Next slide. So in 2020, the City Council adopted an urgency ordinance and temporary parklet program to allow businesses to continue operating during the pandemic by allowing restaurants to use parking spaces for outdoor dining. Staff was directed to develop a formal parklet program and presented the guidelines to the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee in January and June of 2023. The committee members were supportive but expressed concerns about parking availability. Next slide. The guidelines were also presented to the Planning Commission in July, and the commissioners were supportive of continuing the parklet program but recommended setting a reasonable cost for the permit fee. The city then hosted an outreach meeting in September where business owners and members of the public provided feedback regarding the parking affecting their businesses and recommended removing parklets that aren't being used and having any parklets and having parklets in every block wasn't necessary. Next slide. On September 26th, 2023, the City Council held a study session to review and provide input on the guidelines and directed staff to draft an ordinance. Council recommended prohibiting advertising signs, which was incorporated into the ordinance Sections 8.75.090I and J, as no other signs, logos, or advertising are permitted within or on a parklet. Council also wanted to encourage lighting, which is reflected in the parklet guidelines' Design Element Section D, as long as lights don't affect visibility for vehicles. Both the ordinance and guidelines outline requirements to ensure parklets are well-maintained and actively used. Next slide. So the city currently has five parklets, four of which were permitted during the pandemic, and since 2017, the city has permitted a total of 12 parklets total. Next slide. So this map shows the locations of the existing parklets. We have one parklet on Hillcrest, two on the El Camino Real Frontage Road, and two on Broadway. Slide. So the proposed municipal code, Chapter 8.75 Permit Required for Parklets, will regulate and provide a set of standards for the installation, maintenance, and removal of parklets in the public right-of-way. An encroachment permit will be required prior to conducting-- An encroachment permit will be required prior to conducting any work related to the parklet. However, any normal maintenance would not require a permit. The parklet must be designed, modified, and maintained to minimize impacts on the surrounding community, including any visual and noise impacts, obstruction to access, and any other impacts that would create a public nuisance or safety hazard. The permitting must also obtain and maintain adequate liability insurance coverage, and that's in compliance with the city's encroachment permit general conditions. Next slide. The ordinance also prohibits any subletting, so if the existing permitting sells or transfers ownership of the parklet, the new permitting would be required to submit a new permit application. The parklet permitting is responsible for maintaining parklets in a clean, safe, and accessible manner. If the parklet is being removed, the permitting must first notify the city and restore the area to its previous condition. Next slide. So the parklet guidelines provide location and design criteria for parklet installations. The parklet must be installed adjacent to the business's storefront, and if it encroaches onto a neighboring storefront, approval would be needed. The maximum number of parking stalls a parklet can occupy is two parallel or up to four perpendicular spaces. The parklet must maintain a minimum one-foot side, one-foot setback from the travel lane and a two-foot side setback. Next slide. So the parklet platform and railings must be easily accessible and allow for maintenance, access, and stormwater drainage. It must also be sturdy and constructed of visually appealing materials. So some examples of traffic safety protections are wheel stops, post, or bollards. These elements help protect against moving traffic and help make parklets more visible. Furnishings and fixtures must be weighted down or stored inside, and some examples of these include portable heaters or umbrellas. Next slide. So these are just some examples of the types of materials that would be acceptable. This slide shows examples of parklets that are well-built and have sturdy wood railings and platforms. Next slide. So this slide shows types of materials that wouldn't be acceptable, as these materials aren't as visually appealing, for example, the plastic traffic barriers, wood pallets, and old shipping containers. Next slide. So the following fees would be required, a one-time permit application fee for staff review and processing, a public works encroachment permit fee to occupy the public right-of-way, and an annual usespace fee for public parking spaces. The methodology for calculating the fee is being evaluated through the city's ongoing parking study. This fee will be reported back to City Council with the next fiscal year's 2024-2025 master fee schedule next spring. So until then, the annual usespace fees will be waived. Next slide. So staff recommends the City Council waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding chapter 8.75, permit required for parklets of Title VIII Public Works of the Millbrae Municipal Code for the installation and maintenance of parklets in the public right-of-way, two, adopt a resolution implementing the parklet program guidelines, and three, waive the annual usespace fee for the parklet applications until next fiscal year's 2024-2025 master fee schedule update. Staff is available for any questions.
Mayor, I just have one thing to add to that. I received a communication from Councilmember Fung about applying a fee as part of our ordinance this evening. We've done some research, and we're prepared to address that and answer those questions this evening regarding implementation of a fee.
As opposed of waiting until the parking study is done?
And I'll give some more background. The reason why we're waiting is any fee that we charge has to have a nexus, meaning that the amount of the fee has to be drawn to the specific impact. And so that's being studied in our parking ordinance. We have come, worked with Andy and Mike Sung on if the council so desires, a fee that we know will test the legal nexus, you know, based on a price per stall on our upcoming parking study that we feel would be appropriate to commence with if the council so desires, and we can get into that and answer those questions.
So just because I'm a little loopy tonight, the ask is to go ahead and add this into the staff report?
Well, no, I'm just disclosing that, and for council consideration and discussion that I did receive correspondence from the council member, and so we're prepared to.
Thank you. Great presentation. It actually was in my note to wait, but the staff report was pretty clear that we were waiting on this, but if a council member has asked for more clarification.
I don't know for majority of the council.
I'm seeing a couple of shaking heads.
Agreed, I'm just disclosing.
To go ahead.
Let me try to sort of articulate it a bit. First of all, a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank the staff for bringing it forward. Second, I think the last time we discussed this issue, we discussed making sure that the parklet would not have advertisement that does not pertain to the business who sponsors that particular parklet, and make sure that there's no political signage on that whatsoever. I think that needs to be part of the ordinance because it's being done in the public space. Second, in terms of cost, I think we can consider something, it is a private business using a public space, so the public need to be equitably at least compensated for the use for their private business purposes. So to that end, you know, I would, if we're going to be tying that to some sort of a parking study, right, so I think at a very, very barely minimum, 25 cents an hour, you know, 96 on a daily basis for five days a week, you know, so that would equate to about $2.25 a day, five days a week. We can start with that at a very minimum as, until the master fee schedule is ready. I think that would be a good place to start, considering what a fee structure would be on an annualized basis.
So just so that the public can follow along, including a loopy mayor, and I see Councilwoman Papin, I think City Manager, given that staff's done the work on that, I'm hearing nexus study, which the public will go ah on that, and that we're also doing the parking study. Gina, if you're, Councilwoman Papin, if you're okay, can we let them do their presentation, and then we'll loop back, and you'll be first up?
No, Mayor, we've concluded our presentation, so I was just.
Oh, I thought there was going to be more information on the neck, that was it. So, okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I thought we were very clear last time, that we wanted to, this is a public resource that a private business is taking advantage of here. So I'm not sure why that wasn't, you do mention it here, but yet, we have to be very serious about this. You cannot give away public resources, and parking spaces are just that, and it's not a quarter or whatever. I, you know, we should be getting a fair market value for what that is and what is being taken away from the public as far as a parking space. Other cities do it all the time here. I am a bit surprised at the delay, though. Is there any way to speed this up? Because they are getting, they have been getting the benefit, they continue to get the benefit, but the city is losing money. So that is not a good thing. So if there's a way we can speed up this nexus study, again, a lot of cities do this, so can we get an answer to that question? And do we have to send out a whole, full-blown RFP? What, thank you for that. So it looks like the way the head was nodding there, we do not. What would be the timeframe to get a nexus study done? And as far as current applicants, they are aware that this is coming, is that correct? Because we did discuss this last time.
We have noted, we have worked with the five parklet businesses, and yes.
Okay, and what about the timeframe?
The, so it is not a separate study, it's not a special study, it's part of the parking study that is currently in progress. We do have some, I don't know, Tom, if we want to give an example slide of, or if we want to talk about how that works, but effectively, when you, when you have a parking study, depending on how much money you charge for the parking, whether it's 25 cents an hour, a dollar an hour, $2 an hour, there is an actual way to calculate what that would cost. And you can also calculate it based on, you have 20% turnover, 30%, 40%, how often is that space occupied? And so, you know, at the low end of that, if the city charged hypothetically a dollar an hour, I don't, I don't have that table handy, but it's on the last slide. I can show you, show you an example of this. Keep going, one more. So just to give you an idea of, see on the screen in front of you, so if we had a hypothetical paid parking in downtown Millbrae, and depending on the occupancy of those spaces, this is the actual cost based on the estimated time we would charge for parking through our parking study. And of course, that parking study is still ongoing, but this is a very simple formula to do that we already have available for this council. And, and so a lot of cities have started in, for their parklets, they charge per space. One of the most common fees is about $1,200. As you can see on this table, if you charged a dollar an hour for parking and it had roughly half the time of that parking space was occupied, it would come out to about $1,200 a parking space. So that's a very common fee, that's what most other adjacent agencies charge for parklets right now, and that's.
And these are yearly estimates? Are these yearly estimates?
For the whole year, correct.
For parking space.
Correct, for the, during the time period when parking is typically charged. So as I said, we already prepared this table for you in this, so we already do know what the outcome of that would be. What we don't know is what the appropriate amount would be if we did have paid parking downtown, but as I could say, the $1,200 is a typical amount, 966 is another. I would say within that range, you would be in the ballpark of what other communities currently charge.
This is very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
But I would like to know here, this council has not decided what, if we should have downtown parking, or what the cost would be for parking, we haven't decided any of that.
That's right.
But I think we can clearly decide that these businesses are getting a city resource. So do we have to wait until this council decides, or can we go ahead based on something like this and charge a fee to the businesses?
I'm confident we can go ahead with this based on this methodology tonight.
Right answer. Excellent. Thank you. I would suggest that we do just that, because again, it is a city resource, we're not allowed to give away those things for free, and they have been benefiting from that since they went up. So do I make a motion, or can we address that this evening?
I think it's an.
I think you can bring it back with the second reading of the ordinance, it's not agendized. But I think you have to bring this back and.
I would like, in making, I would like to make that motion for this next meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, hold on, let me try to bring control back. So we have a three-part action already tonight, this was one of the things under consideration. Let me, I have a couple of questions to myself before we go anywhere, but Councilman Fung, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Cahalan, any questions? And then we'll come back to discussing what our actions are.
Mayor, if I may, just procedurally, so there is a motion on the floor, unless the council member withdraws her motion, allows the council to discuss, and then make a motion after further discussion.
If I could suggest.
Please, Mr. Conneran.
You have a three-part motion, perhaps that could just be the third, the third part of it.
Would the maker be acceptable to adding that in as a third part?
First, we need to adopt the resolution and direct staff to bring back a fee at the next meeting.
Okay, I wasn't formally making the motion, but I was going to wait for the discussion. I meant to say, as we progress, I would like to make that motion. So there is no formal motion presently before us.
So there's no maker or second about that?
Correct, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, let's just try to, try to let everybody speak.
Of course, that's what I was trying to do, yes.
I do. Councilman Fung.
Yeah, sorry, I just want to get clarification from a legal counsel here, because the recommendation that's in front of us here has got three parts to it. Waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding chapter 8.75, blah, blah, blah. Second, adopt resolutions implementing the parklet program guideline, which I'm fine with, but it's the third one that I'm concerned about, which is to waive the annual fee of the space fee for parklet, which is sort of the main point of our discussion at this point. So since this is already in front of us, we can, based on item number three, decide not to waive the fee but impose a fee. Is that not true?
But it would be added at the second reading.
Okay, but we can, I mean, so I guess what I'm trying to say is we can make a motion to impose a fee as a first, part of the first reading, and then will be confirmed by a second reading later. Is that not correct?
The fee is not part of the amendment to the city code. It was, it was an accessory action sort of after the, after those two other, we're adopting a, we're doing the first reading of an ordinance, we're adopting a resolution, and then there was a, an action to waive the fee. I think what you're, what you're looking for is that you're not going to waive the fee, you're just asking staff to bring back with the second reading of the ordinance, a fee.
Oh, okay, so I see.
We don't have a number, we don't have a, we don't have any, you know, it's hard to adopt a fee, we don't have a, we don't have an amount yet. It's not really agendized as we were imposing a fee, so since it doesn't matter, you have to do the second reading anyway, we'll just do it next.
But can we not provide a direction to the staff to come up with a fee structure that perhaps this council can discuss tonight?
I think we are, and that's what I was going to do.
That's, that's why I want to make sure.
Sure.
That's possible.
Discuss, right, I think you have direction, you're giving direction to this.
So hypothetically, someone can make a motion on item one, item two, and then also a direction on item three.
Yes, you can say, "Staff, we want you to bring back the second reading, a cost per space, and we will do that."
Okay, fair enough. That's what I want to be clear.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Just comments right now. Vice Mayor?
No, I concur. I think that's what was being asked, and I'm clear on the direction we're hopefully going to be giving, and that would be to bring that back for a second reading, including everything that's being discussed tonight.
Which does mean, just so that y'all know, that'll be our rotation night, our reorganization night. However, in the last three years, we have done other city business before we go into the reorganization. So it's within what we normally do. Other cities, we always have that goal of never doing anything on reorg night than reorg, so.
Unless there's a. Just for clarity, the second reading can be on consent, so I won't have to.
Okay. Okay.
Councilwoman, any questions?
Just a little comment and question, I guess. So just in the staff report on the fiscal impact, there were the other fees listed in the report, but the amounts weren't there, so the one-time parklet application fee of $248, and then the planning staff time processing the application, or the public works encroachment permit for $349. So those are set.
Yeah, we did, we have those fees already established, and we've already done fee studies for those, so, yeah.
And then it's the first of every, the January 1st of each year that we collect those fees?
Yeah, we would like to have this run starting January 1st, because obviously, July 1st of fiscal year, parklets are being used, and what business owner wants to come in and do their business in the middle of their busiest time of year? So we think it's a great idea to have it run from January to January.
Okay, so then it's helpful for us to make this decision before January and have this on that calendar year versus waiting until the fiscal year for the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, my questions are a little bit more about the existing parklets. Most of them, from the outside, look like they're built out of plywood. And the ones that I've seen, okay, I'm going to say Menlo Park, or the examples that Ms. Lim showed, were much more sturdy, attractive. Do we, if, when we go forward with this, do we have any way of having the owners of the parklets possibly upgrade them? So we do have that mechanism, what would that mechanism be?
We expect that the existing parklets will probably want to reassess how many spaces they use. Some of them are currently using more spaces than they need, some of them are using more spaces than what the code might allow. They might have an encroachment onto an adjacent frontage, for example. So I think we are going to see, I mean, we only have five, so I think we are going to see some of them come in with a redesign, maybe a reduction, and we'll be able to address it when they do.
Excellent. Yeah, the one that I'm thinking of is the Indian Restaurant. They're lovely, love their food, but it seems to be a lot bigger, and at least two of them, the way they're built, you can't see the businesses on the either side. So yeah, if we can, I think maybe by charging by parking space, it will shrink them down, and that will keep the merchants who cannot have their businesses seen happier. Which now brings me to the difference between the parklet. Which now brings me to the difference between the parklets on Broadway and Hillcrest versus the ones on the Frontage Road. Because I'll be honest, when I try to go into Milbury Lock, if I can't, I want to run in and I want to run out and I can't find parking. So many times I don't go into that store because I can't get parking. And that little block has two, two parklets already on that. So do we have possibly not under this parklet program, a way to help open up the parking in that area? I mean, I think in times past, we've had some of the people living in the mixed-use housing above it, parking there. Maybe that's only after hours, but still that adds to the difficulty. I, I understand that one business owner themselves parks their own business truck there. I mean, I'm aware of all of that. But what can we do to help those merchants on that block that have been, since Taiwu came in, very sensitive to parking?
Yeah, this was the topic of the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee just a few weeks ago. We had our parking consultant present to them. The owner, Milbury Lock Vern, was there. And, and it was discussed. And the parking study that we're working on, all, you know, the goal is turned to improve turnover. And we're, we are actively working on that. That was a discussion during the presentation. And it is definitely first and foremost on our minds and something that we're actively working to improve.
Excellent. In terms of the parking study, when do we think it's going to be completed and come before council?
We're hoping it'll be completed this winter and come before council. Yes.
Because that's a big decision for Milbury, where people from Burlingame and Hillsborough say they love to come here because there's no parking meters. It, it's going to be a tough decision on that one. Those are, those were my questions. Just, I'd love to see an upgrade of the parklets. Again, the Menlo Park ones look really lovely on that and a little bit more sturdy building materials on that. And then the other sad reality is we're windy. I did hear a transportation agency called us windy and cold. We're not always windy and cold. But that plastic sheeting also blocks. How really beautiful El Camino Real is on there. And I hope we have some alternatives for that. I understand the need for it with the wind, but every time you come through it, again, it's a beautiful block. The architecture is lovely and you can't see it. So those would be my comments. With that, council, any other comments? Councilwoman Pappen.
I'd like to make the motion. There's no more comments?
Please go ahead. Oh, sorry, I haven't opened up for public comment. Hang on. Opening for public comment, I have no speaker slips.
Mayor, we do not have any speakers online.
Sorry.
We do not have any speaker online? I have no.
No line, no speaker on top. I, okay, very good. Closing public comment, bringing it back to council. If you could make, maybe we pull up slide three so that. Councilwoman Pappen, would you mind reading the motions?
Yes.
And then however, we're going to modify number three.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding chapter 8.75, permit required for parklets of title eight, public works of the Milbury Municipal Code for the installation and maintenance of parklets in the public right-of-way. Part two, adopt a resolution implementing the parklet program guidelines with the addition that no advertising and no political ads will be allowed on this. And part three, that we impose a fee per space of the parklets. And that, can we do the 1,200 whatever?
Um, yes.
Justifiably so.
We certainly can if you could bring the slide up, the next slide.
Please, yes, if you could bring that slide up.
Just to show you the.
To be fair at this point in time.
This would be the.
$1,208 per parking space.
Okay, I've got a question for that.
Finish that.
Again, I'd rather have you adopt that fee in two weeks when you adopt the.
We'll bring it back.
So we can give notice of it. I, I mean, if you're saying you're directing staff to bring that back to you in two weeks, perfect.
That's what, that's what I'm motioning for. Okay, all right. So that is my motion.
Second.
City Clerk, did you capture the, the change in verbiage that to bring back in two weeks, a fee at $12,000?
$1,208.
$1,208. Sorry, sorry, everyone.
I believe so.
Okay. Very good.
And there's a comment.
There was a second by the Vice Mayor comment.
I just want to get clarification. The 1,200 is per parking space.
That's what I said, yes.
That is correct.
So can you give us some sort of an estimate? Because we only have five of them throughout the city, right? What each of, each one of these parklet would be, would cost on a yearly basis?
So if you had three spaces, you would multiply that by three as your, effectively your rent for the year.
So one year charge on a parklet that comprised of three parks, because some of them.
Thirty-six.
Yeah, 3,600.
Correct.
But the challenge here is that sometimes it might be as wide as three parking spaces, but they span four or even five because it's angle parking.
And well, even if it's angled, it's, it's the width of the angled space. But we're going to see probably businesses, like I said, they'll probably come back and have them reduced because some of them are quite large.
Okay, all right.
And the ordinance does give a maximum number of spaces in.
Go ahead.
Yes?
Yes, those maximum number spaces are in the guidelines.
Right. And just, I know it's been said a few times about signage on the parklets and adding that, but I believe that was in the staff report already included. It's just not on the PowerPoint presentation.
And it is, is it still true that you will come back with a more robust parking, a master fee schedule update in six, seven months? Which will update the cost of these.
Yeah, if the parking study has a recommendation that's, that's different, yes, absolutely.
So it will become, it will change as the master fee schedule changes.
We will address it accordingly, yes.
All right.
Okay, actually, it made me think of two additional questions. Since we're going to be talking about fire assessment and these businesses are basically leasing parking space, do they then have to pay an increase on a fire assessment?
I'm not going to address that. It's not on the agenda, Mayor.
I'll bring it back during the fire assessment discussion. And then.
Easy answer is no. It's not on the agenda.
Okay. If the BID is approved and we've got a lease with these structures that they've now invested in upgrading and the BID is approved and we move quickly into changing sidewalks, will we have the ability to cancel that lease without penalty?
We, we, we would, but it takes so much time that we would have well-advanced notice on an.
Because we're doing this on an annual basis.
Capital improvement projects take time. So we're going to know well in advance before they come to renew.
Okay, so we're all set there. All right.
And Mayor for Clever, so it's an encroachment permit, so it's not a lease. We won't have a lease. It will be encroachment permit.
Okay.
And, and that's revocable at any time.
Okay, as long as we're, the city's protected and we're doing an improvement which will benefit them, that everybody stays happy on that. Okay, any further discussion? Any further clarification? I'm seeing none. City Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Councilmember Pappen.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalen.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The city council waived the first reading and introduced their ordinance adding chapter 8.75, permit required for parklets to title eight of public works of Milbury Municipal Code and to adopt a resolution implementing the parking program guidelines for installation and maintenance of the parklet in the public right-of-way with the addition of no political and advertisement signage on the guideline. And directed staff to return with a parklet space fee of 100, I mean, sorry, $1,208 per parking space annually. The motion passes by five to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk. Congratulations, staff. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, just real quick for benefit of the public and everyone. So the way, the timing of an ordinance works, so this is the first reading this evening. We'll bring the ordinance back for a second reading on December 12th. And then ordinance, ordinances become effective 30 days after the second reading. So this ordinance will actually become effective January 12th.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. All right, still on existing business, agenda item number nine, receive an update of Senate Bill 1383, commercial business, multifamily dwelling and single-family residential compliant. This is an informational item. And I'm very grateful that y'all listened to me and brought this back. I enjoyed the staff report. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just like to introduce our environmental programs manager, Ms. Andrea Papajon.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor Goodman, council members, Andrea Papajon, City of Milbury. Next slide, please. The purpose of SB 1383 is to reduce short-lived climate pollutants. It is really the most significant legislation adopted in California for waste reduction in the last 30 years. There are two kind of key reduction requirements, waste reduction requirements. The first one is the state must reduce organic materials, which are food waste, green waste and paper. 75% disposal from the landfill by 2025. The other reduction, the other requirement is that 20% of currently disposed edible food be recovered for human consumption by 2025. So given that this is a statewide target and not a jurisdictional target, the regulation is a lot more robust than approach, let's say, it's different than AB 939. And jurisdictions are required to implement specific actions, which I'll talk about a little bit later. But sometimes I'll, we'll be talking to a business and they'll ask, why do we have to do this? You know, why do we have to have a green cart? And so I would just, you know, like to spend a minute to say that, as you probably all know, but sometimes businesses ask and people ask me, you know, why should I do this? Landfilling organic waste leads to the anaerobic breakdown of the material and that creates methane. And methane is 84 times more potent than CO2 over a 20-year horizon. And landfilling organic material is actually the third-largest producer of methane in the state. So SB 1383 was really designed to reduce this global warming gas. And SB 1383 is a fast track to fighting climate change. Next slide, please. So just to give an overview of what the requirements are for local governments. First of all, Milbury needs to provide mandatory organic waste curbside collection to all residents and businesses. Next, the city must establish a food recovery program. And actually, we, the county has, has been establishing and leading this food recovery program. The city signed an MOU with the county in, which was approved August 4th of 2021. The city also has to conduct outreach and education to all affected parties, including generators, haulers, city departments, all businesses, multifamily units. And I'll give a high summary of what we've been doing in that in the presentation. We also have capacity planning for organic waste. And capacity planning shows that capacity reserved to process there, there's enough capacity reserved to process organic waste. So we work with our partner, Scavenger, South San Francisco Scavenger, to show that we have verifiable, available organic recycling capacity through the end of 2024. So, yeah, so we're good on that kind of in the short term. The next requirement is, for local governments, is to procure recycled organic waste products like compost, mulch or renewable natural gas. So every jurisdiction has a target, a state target, and the formula is the population times .08. So Milbury's target would be 1,801 tons of compost per year. So it certainly, you know, that's a huge amount. There's no way we could distribute 1,801 tons of compost in Milbury each year. But thankfully, our partner, South San Francisco Scavenger, has an anaerobic digester, an AD facility. And that AD facility uses the organic material and creates renewable natural gas to fuel their trucks and heat their AD facility. And so we are, we have, we have met our targets thanks to the fact that we are partners with Scavenger. And so I just, you know, wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear. Other cities who don't have an AD facility are struggling to meet that target. Okay, and we also must inspect and enforce compliance with SB 1383. So I'll talk about our enforceable mechanism, the ordinance that we passed. And we have to maintain accurate and timely records. We have to basically show all our activities, upload all our receipts and do an electric annual report called the EER and all the required reporting to CalRecycle. Next slide, please. So to ensure compliance with SB 1383, the city council adopted ordinance 791 in November of 2021. Some of the key requirements of the ordinance are, first, that single-family, multifamily dwellings of five or more dwelling, of five or more units and commercial businesses must have organic collection service and properly sort all their materials. Secondly, businesses must supply their own internal containers for their contractors, their tenants, their customers, and they must be color-coded and labeled. And the state has, requires that all now containers be the same color. So for example, all organic collection bins are green. You can go anywhere in the state and they should be green and then properly labeled. There is a little bit of a grace period for cities who have to swap out these colors, but in short while, they'll all be green. The third and fourth bullets are on the edible food recovery program. And as I mentioned, the city has delegated authority to enforce these provisions to the County of San Mateo. I will just say that tier one, the largest commercial edible food generators, those are the ones that are over 10,000 square feet. So think like Costco or Safeway. Those will have to have a written agreement with food recovery organizations. And that's already in process. And then the large ones, not to be confused with the largest, but the large ones are like 5,000 square, square feet or more, and that's tier two. Those food generators, those are, examples are restaurants with 250 or more seats, hotels with 200 rooms, large venues, large events, like 2,000 people per day or more. So think art and wine. All of those events and organizations will have to have a written agreement with food recovery organizations by January 1, 2024. And that's also, you know, being managed by the county. The next requirement is that all of our vendors of paper products are required to meet specified recycled content paper. And so the requirement is 30% post-consumer recycled paper content. And so even our vendors, so if we do a mailing and our vendors send out a letter, they have to certify that they're meeting this standard. And finally, the city has the right to inspect and enforce the requirements contained in the ordinance. And enforcement will begin January 1, 2024. Next slide, please. So just, this is kind of a high-level summary of our education and outreach. We have sent letters to all Milbury commercial businesses and multifamily dwellings that are not in compliance. We sent letters August of 2022. And then we did a follow-up in November to those who still weren't in compliance. And we sent another letter a month ago in September. We, it was in three languages, English, Spanish and traditional Chinese. We sent it to both their business address and their billing address as our best effort to really reach these businesses who are not in compliance. We have worked closely with Scavenger to share our messaging on all our social media platforms, you know, Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor and Instagram. And they've really, Scavenger's done a great job creating like the cart family. You may have seen that in a lot of the posts. And so we've shared a lot of those messages for the, together. We've also utilized Milbury News and MCTV to assist in outreach. Maybe you've seen some of the articles there. Scavenger produces this trash talk. And I think, you know, we've included that in some of our platforms. And Scavenger's also included information in their newsletters, on their website and when they do site visits. We have hosted trainings in all of our city departments to educate our city staff on how this impacts them. So early on, we, yeah, we had presentations to city staff on the fact that we have to have green carts in all of our employee break rooms and just the importance of sorting all the organic material. all the organic material. And we've also created a dedicated webpage with an abundance of information and how to reach us if anyone would like to reach us directly. Okay, next slide, please. The ordinance also had a provision for developing a waiver for businesses that wanted to be considered, to apply for a waiver. And there are two main waivers. One is a de minimis, which is a minimal generation waiver. So if a business generates two cubic yards or more, but of that waste, 20, it has less than 20 gallons of organics material, they can apply for a waiver. And the other one is if they generate less than two cubic yards a week and of that waste less than 10 gallons of that waste is organic material. So an example would be maybe like a law office, there's perhaps, you know, three employees and maybe they don't work even every day of the week. They generate a minimal amount, they can apply for a waiver. We review all the waivers, we require photos, and we also do site visits on many occasions. The other type of waiver is a physical space waiver, and that is for commercial businesses who feel they just don't have the space to fit the green container. And in that case, we also will require photos and we will do a site visit. And the site visits are really conducted by Scavenger. So they'll go out and they may say, hey, you know, maybe in this closet, you could, there's room to fit a green cart or, you know, in the parking garage. So we look very closely to try to help them find space if they feel they're constrained. And then there are exceptions for businesses that backhaul. For example, Safeway backhauls all their waste to Tracy, and then they have an anaerobic digester in Turlock. And next slide, please. So this is our current account status. I updated the numbers from the staff report so that they're, they're current. And so total commercial accounts are 307. There are 219 that are compliant. That's about a 71% rate. And for total multifamily dwellings, this is five or more units, 142 accounts, 89 are compliant. That's about 63%. And all of our single-family residents have green bins and are compliant. So over the last few weeks, like I said, we sent a letter in September. We have received over nine, there have been 96 commercial businesses and multifamily accounts that have either added service or a waiver has been approved or some of them have gone out of business. And we will continue to work with Scavenger in partnership for compliance with SB 1383 as we've done for all of our previous state waste recycling mandated requirements. And then just one final thought is that, you know, everyone can do something to fight climate change, and sorting your organics in your green waste bin is something everyone should do. So thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Papa John. Questions from council? Oh, Ms. Pappen.
What happens if people don't comply?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yes, so beginning January 1, we will be inspecting and we'll send a notice of, we'll encourage them to, to sign up at, at that point. We'll get, you know, and then we will have to send a notice of violation and give them some time again. And then we do, you know, we are able to enforce it through a fine.
Would a business, you say a business refuses to comply? Do we force closure or what, what happens here?
You know, I would probably need to consult with my colleagues internally. Might defer to our legal counsel here, please.
I think fines are the obvious enforcement mechanism.
In other words, he doesn't know exactly, but I would assume maybe the legislation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall, our ordinance doesn't include a shutdown provision, but I can.
Yeah, I think the law might go further, but, okay, I'm just interested in that. And thank you so much to the scavengers for having a digester and letting us use it.
Yes, and I did.
We are greatly appreciative of you all.
Thank you. And I wanted to, you know, welcome and thank, you know, them for coming. Doug, our, the CEO, Paul Formosa, the CFO, and Mike Formosa, and also in accounting or finance. And also Teresa Montgomery is logged in online. They're here to also answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
No question, just thank you for your attention to detail and on this very important issue. And then also to our strong community partners in South San Francisco Scavenger for your efforts as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Just a quick question or a comment. I, I'm under the impression that if a certain business do not comply and then co-enforcement came out and issued them a citation and then there's outstanding fine as they seek, I guess, renewal of their business license and use permit, renewal, I guess those things will become items that they must clear in order to move forward, right? So to the point that Ms. Pappen made a moment ago, you know, we're not going to shut down your business, but we're going to work with each and every business to bring them into compliance. And we're confident that there is sufficient mechanism here to ensure everyone comes to compliance at some point, sooner rather than later.
Agreed, thank you.
I also, I also don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for the report on the status of where we are with this and with our community partnerships. And, you know, I'm very proud and grateful that in Millbrae, we've been working on green waste for as long as I can remember. You know, we're way ahead of this. My children have grown up with three bins their whole life, and that's the norm to them. And that's what we're doing for this generation in our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your support. Okay, I do have a few questions. Actually, I love the staff report. I was really pleased to hear that the, the letters were going out for the public. I, I also work in this industry, so for me, this is all fun. So I love the staff report. Couple of questions. Really happy to see the numbers on multifamily dwellings. I don't see it much on Nextdoor, but usually you're in an apartment complex of six units, so, or, or under five. You're in that three to five category. You can't get yard waste, you can't get food scraps, you can't get any of that. So that was really terrific to see that those numbers are as good as they are and hopefully will approve. Historically, it's been the landlords that are the, the ones who block it. So I hope we keep, keep working on that. I had talked to the city manager earlier that quite often, when the public has an issue, they come to the elected officials. And it would be great if all of us could get a copy of the educational materials so that we know how to point to people and maybe a couple copies of those letters, just so, or maybe it's just me who wants to read this and know. But I, I know that many of our multifamily dwelling, I know the term has changed now. They're going to be so happy to have access to that. And one question though, because I had a couple constituents call me saying bulky goods keep getting dumped into the middle of Rich, Richmond Drive. It's got that wider median strip. And MFDs, MFRs, whatever they're, we're calling them, don't always have bulky goods. So if you could just put that in your tickle file to figure out how we can help those because they're getting up, moved into the mid, middle of the street there, you can't track the ownership then. And then likely the city is picking up those bulky goods on that. I hosted with the city, with the Lions, the Monster Mash indoors this time. So I went to the Costco business, the Business Costco in South City, trying to find truly compostable, not paper plates, but the cups. And I went through two rows of their stuff. And again, 40 years in this industry, and it took me about 30 minutes to track down the one paper cup that's truly compostable. And most of it is because the labeling is lying on that. We have a legislative committee now and are working on the legislation. We would like to have our lobbyists work on. And I would like to hear in two areas. First of all, the labeling, so that special events know actually what to buy. And I, I go to all of our special events and I shop at multiple food vendors so I can see what they're using, and it's about 50%. You know, but it's very complicated for them. And if we could have better instructions. But if Costco is still selling the bad stuff and it's labeled fully compostable and it's clearly plastic, we got a problem on there. So that probably is a legislative problem bigger than all of us. But let us know about that. And then, this week, it came out that the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act is funding anaerobic digestion services around the country. If we're running out of AD space and we need to get another digester, I don't know if you've got enough room, but make sure you're talking to us that we know and we put that on our priority list because it is, it's more than really cool. We are ahead of the game with the anaerobic digestion. And I know how much work South City Scavenger went in the early days to get that done. And the third thing in terms of legislation is, right now, we get purchasing credits for the biomethane, but that's going to sunset in another two years? Is it two years? Okay, yeah, and that's the other problem, making garbage trucks go electric when the technology isn't quite there yet. But make sure, if you can let us know, we can put it on our legislative priority list on that so that we're working together on that. Because that's going to be a hard one for us. If we lose that purchasing agreement, we might end up being behind the limits that we have to do. And most cities are struggling with where to put compost or mulch. We're ahead of the game on that. So those are kind of my comments on that. The other question that I did get from a young lady, school groups are really pushing reusables in restaurants, not just for takeout, but within restaurants. And that, if we can put that onto our work plan, because that'll be a waste reduction activity and it will get rid of plastics on that. So with that, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. I just wanted to invite, if anyone from Scavenger wanted to respond to any of the
Might fall over. Hi, I'm Doug Buttons, South San Francisco Scavengers, and Paul Formosa. 1383 is new, but it's kind of a result of all the stuff that started back in 1986. If some of you remember, there was a Marburg barge that had a bunch of garbage from New York that went around the world and had nowhere to go. And the next thing you know, we started looking at landfills and that spawned 939 where we started saying we need to quit relying on landfills, they're closing, there, there's less and less. And we started recycling newspaper bottles and cans. All of this kept going. Then we had 341, which was mandatory commercial recycling, then mandatory organics recycling. But all of these never had any real teeth in them. 939, everything, it said, if you didn't do it, you got a $10,000 a day fine. So cities signed up. The rest of them didn't have any fine. But now, climate change has come to the forefront and they find, as, as you heard, that a lot of this has to do with landfills. And so we're trying to avoid that and we're trying to do better with it. We have a digester, we have this. But 1383 is changing because it now says, if you don't do it, you're going to get fined and the city has to fine you. So we're hoping that everybody cooperates. And right now, we know that the citizens of Millbrae really are doing a good job. Not perfect, nobody's doing it perfect yet, but we're getting there. And I thank the city and I thank everybody for cooperating. And it is hard because there's the ick factor of taking this stuff out of a garbage can, but really, it's no different than when you put it in a garbage can. It's not like going to attract vermin or anything else. It's handled properly, it's moved weekly. We handle it, we, we digest it, we make compost, we're running our trucks on it. Great stuff, you know? And the idea is, is if we all do it, this world's going to last a lot longer and be a lot better place for us all. So, I thank you.
Just along the ick factor, I know Recology had real big problems when they started adding food waste to their green waste bins. How are the people of Millbrae participating with that? Do we ever do, do you ever do a site inspection, say it looks like 50% of the bins have food scraps or anything like that?
Right now, with 1383, it's required to do lid flipping and we're out there doing it. You have to do so many a quarter, so many a year. And it's all voluntary right now that we're just telling and informing people that, okay, you need to do a better job, you still have some organics in here or you don't. But that will be where, when January 1 comes around, all of a sudden, there's going to be more enforcement. That, you know, the idea is to get people to go along easily rather than forcefully. But, you know, it's, it's new for some people. They just don't understand that, why can't I put them in the garbage can? And, you know, the reason is, is because it causes greenhouse gases that are bad for us all. So we can handle them better.
Excellent. Councilwoman, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. And just a hot tip, I know some people don't like to throw things in the composter because it smells or whatever. Hot tip, you can always freeze it until garbage day and it won't smell then. In your, once it, garbage day comes, take the frozen object out and put it in the compost bill. So it's a good hint to have. So, because some people are like, oh, I don't want it to smell and all that stuff, but that, that's a, it's easy way around it. Just freeze it and then when the compost day comes, put it in your composter.
Well, I, I'm looking forward to possibly doing with our PIO, our Public Information Officer, Justine, some of these helpful hints on that.
And we're hoping nobody gets fined anywhere, but, I mean.
We know how many cities got fined for AB 939 and how many years later. I'm sure it's not going to be fining in the beginning, but the reason I asked for the information is we're all out in restaurants and we can gently, we can use a little bit of peer pressure if business X isn't quite working on it or it doesn't look like it. Hopefully, we can do the carrot versus the stick. But a little bit of stick can help on that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to take one moment to thank Andrea for all the hard work she's done. I know she has a lot of responsibilities, but her and Teresa Montgomery have been working very closely on the, this project in general for the last couple of years, actually. And they've done a lot of work. And it's a lot of tedious work at times, like flipping lids on garbage cans and see if there's any organics in there, for example. But they've done a fantastic job. I just want to thank them both, actually.
Thank you. And actually, Teresa, if you're watching, when we had our ribbon cutting for the rec center, the organic bins didn't have the label show. She moved mountains to make sure there were the labels there. But Ms. Teresa, sometimes my yard waste bin is out in front of the house because I'm still in this never-ending remodel and people put their dog do in there. So maybe we can get a no, no, it's always in a plastic bag and then I have to dig in there and put it in the garbage can. Maybe we could get a little bit more labeling. Our green waste bins kind of look like garbage cans. Mine's green now, what used to be black. But maybe we need some more signage on all of the residential yard waste bins on that. I, you got me. Teresa sent me some and I stuck it on there and people still put dog do in my bin. I guess I need to get it back in the garage, but soon on that. So thank you, Teresa, out there. Okay, thank you. Okay, existing business, item number 10. Receive an update on fiscal year 2023, 2024 adopted city goals and provide direction. This is an action item. City manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you may all know, the city council adopted protocols allow any council member to request through the mayor an item be placed on the agenda. And this item was so requested by council member Cahalan. And so we have an update on our annual goals. This will also be followed up during our, our mid-year budget report and annual review. So go to the next slide. So tonight, review and discuss the status of the city council adopted fiscal year 23, 24 goals and direct any reprioritization or amendments as may be desired by the city council. And just wanted to bring to your attention, the council adopted six strategic initiatives. This was done in 2019 with the sixth one added last year. But to go through those real quick, the strategic, strategic initiative number one is to define the Millbrae community of tomorrow and the built environment. This is land development-related, long-range planning. Two, as a sustainable city and infrastructure investment. The third strategic initiative is quality of life, neighborhood enhancement, strong community. Four is city government organizational success. Five is fiscal sustainability, economic development. And the six is environmental stewardship, as I mentioned, was, was amended to be changed. And the six is environmental stewardship, as I mentioned, was amended to be changed a little over a year ago. So real quick, what is a strategic initiative? It's just a broad statement for a long-term vision under which goals can be established on an annual basis, as the council presently does or do. And it organizes our day-to-day activities to align those with these strategic initiatives, among the many other things that we do every day to keep the city moving, which I'll get into here in a few moments. And in essence, it sets forth that kind of 30,000-foot navigational beacon for the city's direction. So on the adopted council goals, under the six strategic initiatives, there were actually four strategic initiatives for which eight goals were determined by the council this year, starting with strategic initiative number one. Goal one, city complete architectural design standards for all neighborhoods and completes historic designation for all parts of Millbrae. This provides an additional tool for requiring mitigation from expansion plans by transportation entities who must follow NEPA as well as CEQA rules. So the status of that goal, it's in progress. Request for proposal was prepared, responses were submitted and reviewed by staff, and the city council actually approved the contract with Lisa Wise Consulting on November 14th, just the last meeting to commence with those guidelines. Or standards, I should say, because guidelines are no longer a legal term. Then the next goal, prioritize very low-income housing, develop downtown local density bonus program greater than state currently allows. Again, this is an implementation measure in our housing element, but that is in progress. This is in conjunction, as I mentioned, with the adopted housing element. Harrison Associates is the firm that prepared our housing element. And as the city council may recall during their presentation, when the council self-certified our housing element, they stated that they have experience in developing local density housing programs. So that study is underway with community development staff and Harrison Associates. And we actually plan on bringing an amendment to their contract to the city council in late So the third goal is east side specific plan. This again is in progress. Planning is underway for community engagement, visioning, opportunities and constraints, and preparation of concept plan. Staff has commenced with the initial planning assessment and that formulated a presentation of the overall planning approach to the East Side Subcommittee on November 16th. Then we plan on moving forward with a request for proposal to solicit consultants to prepare community engagement, the visioning plan, opportunities and constraints in a concept plan. And we plan on releasing that RFP in early February. So moving on, strategic initiative number four, city government and organizational success. There was one goal and that is streamline the permit tracking portal for planning and building. This has been kind of an ongoing assessment internally with staff, building, planning, also engineering that issues encroachment permits. But we've done significant research and analysis. We've had several presentations from software companies, software packages. So we plan on releasing an RFP here in January. The project management software is obviously essential for permit management, tracking, project management of the various permits. And then most importantly, the direction of the council was to ensure a public portal access that 24/7, anyone that has a permit with the city can log in and see what the status of their permit is. And so that is something that, like I said, is in progress. Then moving on, strategic initiative number five, there are two goals. The first is pursue the downtown business association advocating for the downtown business improvement district. This is in progress. The city council approved the contract with New City America for the business improvement district formation July 11th of this year. So significant outreach to businesses continues to be ongoing and an assessment and evaluation of the assessment amounts, the type of support based on the property owners is, like I mentioned, currently in progress. Once we continue down this path, that will form the actual boundaries of the district. So we've started from Murchison, which is the southern border of the city, all the way up to Park Boulevard. So we don't call it our downtown, we actually just call it kind of our central business district. Next is a goal to create an empty storefront ordinance and front window facade ordinance. This has been on hold as we are awaiting the business improvement district formation. And so we are, once the BID is formed and we engage the business community, kind of what was stated earlier this evening, we secure an stick approach. We want to move forward with a carrot approach first and foremost. And as we're starting to form the BID and getting that support, we want to hear from the business community and the property owners relative to these issues. But we do plan, hopefully, formation with the BID of vote coming in March. So again, goals don't follow, you know, July 1st to June 30th. And as you'll see later on in this presentation, a lot of times, goals have multiple years. And so this is one that we see moving out into the future. Then moving to our environmental stewardship, this is strategic initiative number six. There are two goals. One is onsite solar generation on mixed use in large residential development. So again, the review and research by staff is underway with RFP preparation underway. This is conjunction. We see this as separate in terms of the relationship with peninsula clean energy and communicating to developers and the business community that PCE offers a lot of onsite solar generation grants and low-interest funding opportunities. But also, we see this as a possible incentive that can relate to our local density housing bonus ordinance, that if there is onsite solar generation, then from a local density bonus perspective, this could be one of several elements that could increase the density that would be allowed. Next, Mayor, complete the tree ordinance and the heritage trees with maps. Complete urban forest inventory that includes health of existing trees and review trees that should be removed due to drought, insect infestation, and wind damage. There's a note that the council noted or that we noted that the city is replacing street trees. You drive around the city, we are replacing street trees in the Bayside Manor neighborhood and in the Highlands neighborhood where street trees have been prominent traditionally. So that reforestation is underway. But the RFP preparation is in progress with a consultant to commence work on the ordinance by the end of January. So there's two consulting firms, actually, that we've shortlisted that we're looking at and reviewing and will bring to the council that contract for completion. So moving on, so this is the adopted budget for each of the eight goals. In total, it's 2.175 million that the council or reallocated and were adopted in this year's budget. So I wanted to bring to the council's attention that, you know, we are a very busy city and every day, staff works. I mean, the presentation this evening with the new law, there are many things that we do every single day to provide service and keep the city running. But kind of a 30,000-foot summary, parking and traffic improvements, including significant street paving. I shared one of those with the council this evening on Lincoln Circle. This also, because of the one-dig policy, includes other infrastructure improvements with water, sewer, storm, and reclaimed water. Next, you know, aging infrastructure is a tremendous issue for this city. For decades, our infrastructure has been deferred. We've been in a big hole, but we're climbing out of it. I'm anxious to see actually what our pavement condition index will be because as you drive around the city, we're making great progress. But that's just ongoing and every day, we're looking at and obviously bring the capital improvement program on an annual basis to the city council for prioritization. As I say, you've heard me say this a million times, we've got $10 in need and $1 of revenue. Affordable housing, our housing element adoption, obviously very important. We still have not received from HCD our certified housing element. We continue to go back and forth with HCD. There are some things that they are asking that are above and beyond state law, but we're working with them and we hope here, Andy, what in the next month or two, that we actually have a certified housing element because we've responded to every comment that they've made. And some of our frustration is there's a lot of turnover at HCD at the state level. And so we have one reviewer that we've been working with, they leave, another reviewer comes in, and so we're dealing with that. Sea Level Horizon Environment, obviously, there's been presentations over the last several months or the last meeting, actually, on Sea Level Horizon where we're headed on that. So that's an ongoing program. We have archaic policies. I mean, we have policies that, you know, are from, you know, the 1970s and 1960s. This includes, you know, labor and land use and purchasing policies. So we're constantly updating and modernizing our municipal code. Land use policies, our general plan and downtown specific plan was recently adopted. And so now we're in the implementation phases of that. We've issued a little over 1,000 building permits so far this calendar year. And there's tremendous review, as you can imagine, you know, with our building department, planning department. We've implemented a quality control program now that every building permit has to have a land use review. So we've got checks and balances that we built into our system. Plus, as the council knows, we just opened 388 housing units east of the Millbrae Station, of which 120 are affordable housing units. And we have over 1,000 units that are approved or in the pipeline, of which, and part of this presentation, is the affordable housing program. And the city council last year adopted the 15% inclusionary affordable housing ordinance that now applies to every project. We also, as you know, have over a million square feet of Class A office under construction. And then, as you heard from the chief, our public safety and levels of service from both the sheriff's office and CCFD, our response times still, a very high level of service of response times. And more that we can do there for sure, especially in terms of community engagement and public outreach. The chief's presentation this evening, there's been, you know, great strides in those improvements. Next slide. And so again, all of our work, we're constantly working on our long-term fiscal planning, stability. We bring to the council balanced budgets every year. Again, we have more need than what we have dollars for. And so that is a day, every day, we're looking at the budget, you know, working with Mike and the various department heads to make sure that all of our expenditures are within budget and within plan. And we do other things, so like the Juneteenth celebration or other festivities that we look at and say, yeah, I think we can add that and continue with that high level of service to the community. Neighborhood community, community engagement enhancement. You know, our website overhaul was just released a few months ago. See Click Fix has been just becoming more and more popular and a useful tool to communicate maintenance deficiencies to the city. Utility billing improvements that finance has been working on, allowing credit cards and account management. Again, service for the homeless at the In-Line Bart Station. Not only the In-Line Bart Station now, but throughout downtown with Life Moves and the Help Program that we've implemented. We continue to make great progress in that area. Recreation programs and activities, you know, Hannah, our recreation director is constantly looking at what is current in terms of recreation, both in terms of fitness and arts and overall activities. The, finally, Gina, the resurfacing of the tennis courts has just been off-the-charts popular. The relining to include pickleball. You can go out there every single night and it's becoming more and more popular. We're going to have to look at more pickleball courts here, I think, in the future because it's so great to see, you know, them being used and the community using it. Agreements with Millbrae Education or the Millbrae Elementary School District Field Use Maintenance. We are very close to be bringing that to the school board and then to the city council. Technology deficiencies, we're constantly working on how we can improve. Not only the security, I think we all know the stories of various cities that have been hacked. So working with Stepford and our local or our current staff to constantly look to make sure that we're protected. And then business and economic improvement, our lack of retail, but knowing that a robust economic development is, and you've heard me say this, it's as important as housing. We are a bedroom community. You just saw tonight and you'll hear it in a report forthcoming on the next agenda item. Because of Proposition 13, housing does not pay for itself. And so communities like the city of Millbrae, we have to look and prioritize business attraction and economic development. And that has changed so much because the landscape of retail has changed so much. I mean, brick and mortar stores are not as in demand. So being able to shift gears and make some land use changes to allow for life science, where Icon now coming in, our first corporate headquarters, point of sale, use tax, which use tax is a sales tax for any equipment that's purchased over half a million dollars. So we're, you know, starting to see those improvements. This is stuff that we work on, our social equity committee, things that aren't even on the list. You know, that, mentioned it this evening, and we'll be bringing that. The one thing, talking to EJ Solutions, that we learned, 73 applications. We didn't even know if we'd get 12. And so, you know, it is, yeah, I mean, couple-week delay and all that, but we're looking at the community. The objective is the community, right? And so as we get this many applications and of that, we had 40% youth applications. And so we'll be bringing somebody in the subcommittee and the city council on a little bit of change in the work program for not only the subcommittee, but a youth advisory committee to supplement the subcommittee. So things that, you know, we're adapting to and changing because this is new and we don't know, you know, until we start implementing. So anyway, so those are the things that, you know, that we consistently and constantly work on. The two parks, you know, on the east side, Bayside Manor Park and Marina Vista Park. We're going out for bid, Sam, in mid, in February now. So, you know, a lot of work goes into it. Once the design is approved, construction drawings have to be, have to be on design. So every nail, every screw, every inch of concrete, every inch of pavement, every swing, spring has to be specked out. I mean, there's a lot of work. But still, critical path to get those opened by the end of 2024, hopefully earlier. So we're staying on that critical path. So continued work on previous goals. I know there's a lot here. Update the Millbrae Station specific plan. Those updates were to allow BSL level, Bio Service Level 2, to allow that additional land use. Complete the ADU is accessory dwelling unit and urban lot split ordinances. Those are now complete. Park maintenance and improvements, that's ongoing. You know, again, we look at levels of service. We have six maintenance workers that maintain all of our parks and all of our medians and they just knock it out of the park every day under John Genoli, the supervisor. General plan, downtown specific plan, and climate action plan. Again, every project that comes through the door, we make sure that they're complying with the general plan or any of the specific plans, not just the downtown, but the stationary specific plan. Develop the Grand Boulevard and complete streets program. As the council knows, we shared with you a couple of months ago, the re-landscaping and redesign of the medians on El Camino Real, that's the first step. We also have a robust, safe routes to school program that we continue to implement and will roll out and continue to see improvement there. Very active in grants in that area under Sam's leadership. Complete and adopt a cell tower antenna ordinance. You probably forgot about this one. This has been on hold because there's been some significant changes in state law as well as federal law. So we're waiting for some of those federal laws to actually see where they go to be adopted before we bring this ordinance to the city council. The only area that a local municipality has in terms of cell antennas is the aesthetics. So we don't have any under Federal Communications Act, any governance or any discretion on the type of antenna or really even where they go. To some extent, we do, but it's mostly aesthetics. And so we're waiting, we're waiting for some of these laws to actually be adopted before we launch another ordinance. Establish community facilities district, this goes into our constant, how do we maintain as new development comes in? How do we ensure that new development pays for itself? City council adopted the development impact City council adopted the development impact fees, that's for capital improvements. Still something we're looking at is a community facilities district that could be voted in by the developer, by the property owner, to fund recurring operation and maintenance costs. So as that population comes in, there's an impact on library, there's an impact on public safety, there's a community impact on the maintenance of our roads. There is no funding source to pay for that, and a community facilities district is one of those mechanisms. As I mentioned, development impact fees, that's complete. User fee update to achieve improved cost recovery, that's complete, and that's an ongoing annual fee schedule that we analyze and assess and bring that to the city council. The sustainable foodware ordinance that's adopted, that we're working with the county for enforcement. So again, this, just want to share with the council, you know, what we're doing and how busy we are, and this, again, I can go into a lot more detail, but anyway, that kind of concludes the overview. We can go back to the existing goals and the status if you'd like, or be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, city manager. Questions from council? Council McCailan?
I, you know, as our city manager said in the beginning, I requested this to be on the agenda, and I thought just for us and for the public, you know, we're always in the work, but it's good to stop, you know, we're at that mid-fiscal year, so it's a good time to look at our goals and to see where we're at, and to start thinking about our goal-setting for next year. Last year, you know, schedules were tight, so we kind of did it right at the last minute, it was a little bit rushed. And a piece of this is providing direction, and so I'd like to, you know, if there's any discussion about the goals and where we're at, but also to have some discussion thinking about how we go about goal-setting for next year. I would say what the list that we went through are action items, that they're not necessarily These are action items that would achieve a goal, but they're not a goal themselves if you look more at a strategic planning process. And that's, what I'd really like to propose to the council is, next year, rather than doing goal-setting, that's just us coming up with each of our own lists, compiling those lists, having discussion and voting on our own lists, really go through a true strategic planning process, where we have community input, where we take into account all the city work, like our city manager just shared, you know, there's all of this other work going on, and really look at what is, you know, with each of these strategic initiatives, under that each initiative, what is the vision? And then what are the goals that we want to work towards that vision, and what are the action items under those goals? And, you know, maybe it's a three-year strategic plan, maybe a five-year strategic plan, but something that's much more holistic to building and supporting and enhancing our city and the life experience of our residents here than kind of how we've done it the last few years. So I pose that to the council for discussion.
Thank you, councilwoman. Other comments? Then I'll speak. This is my eighth year. 2023 is gonna be the hottest year on record of the planet ever. We don't do, we do some environmental stuff, and because of the partnership with South City, we do some things well. But typically, in my eight years, first it took five years to even get a climate action plan on the agenda. We have general plans, we have this plan, we have that plan, we have more plans. I don't support doing another strategic plan when, right now, after eight years of trying to get a gosh darn tree ordinance, we still don't have a tree ordinance. So you want to do it, not you, sorry, doing another plan when each one of these plans has actions, some of which were mandated to do, some of which were morally obligated to do, I just can't support that. I mean, I'm gonna be gone in another year, you'll see what your new city council does, but I want to implement. I don't want to do any more planning. I am tired of planning. I am tired of housing taking up all of our staff time. I've had people come up to me and say, well, why didn't, I had someone, a housing advocate, say, well, you know, you should be able to do everything that you're supposed to do with the loss of the revenue from La Quinta, and with all the time that that has taken on staff, you should be able to do your climate change work too. And it's like, really? Where do you think, the money tree falls on that? There isn't, right now, our most important thing is economics, so that we have the money to do the programs we've already agreed to do. So doing another strategic plan, no. We have stuff to implement, stuff that has been waiting for years. And when I thought about it, and it took me a while to dawn on this, the same staff that developed the ordinances for a tree ordinance are the same staff doing all the housing laws that Sacramento's put on us, and the same staff that had to reply and figure out what's gonna happen with La Quinta, and how do we save the businesses that are already being hurt by the county's actions? We have stuff to implement right now. So I hear you on that, you're hearing me that of the two goals that I managed to get through, even though the tree ordinance was in the previous year's goals, both of them are on hold. Okay, one's going out for an RFP, I couldn't tell you how frustrated I am as someone with two environmental science degrees who believes in climate change and everything else comes before it, on that. So that's where I'm, I don't support that.
I think, if I may respond, my hope is that a strategic plan would help prevent that from happening, so that, like, if you look for this year, there's a couple areas of strategic initiatives that we don't even have actions on, right?
We have continued from last.
That we continued from the previous year, but then on the website with strategic goals, those aren't acknowledged, you know, and included, and, you know, included in later slides in this update. So when you have a thorough strategic plan, you're bringing those pieces together, so you're ensuring that no strategic initiative is left out, so that we wouldn't see environment left out year over year. That this is, if we're gonna say this is a strategic initiative, then we're gonna have goals and there's gonna be actions towards that every single year, because we're saying we have a commitment to that. If there's steps laid out for each year in our general plan, in the housing element, in the downtown specific plan, those are incorporated, so that we have something that's very thorough and holistic, so that things don't get left to the side or forgotten. And that's, that's my hope for a strategic plan versus, because I think, you know, the way we've been doing it the last, or the way it's, I can only say "we" for me for one year, but I think the method that we've been using for this year over year is what's caused some of these things to not happen year over year. So I'm trying to find a solution that would prevent things from falling off the radar and that would put the needs of the city before the desires of whoever's in the council at the moment, you know, is another piece of.
Yeah, I mean, maybe I can weigh in here. So we have to be realistic, we have to have realistic goals, realistic achievement, and I hear your frustration, mayor, and I know 10 years ago you asked for a tree ordinance.
Eight years, eight years.
But we're busy, and we have $10 of need and $1 revenue, and we have a lot that's being thrown out. We're busier today than this city has ever been since, we've done more, you talk about implementing, we've done more in the last five years than this city has done since its incorporation in 1948. I know that, because I've lived here for almost 25 years. I have experience that I've brought to this city. I understand, but we also have to be realistic. I think what the council member is saying, and as a city manager, I agree with him. We have never surveyed the community, ever, to ask them what their needs are. Not one time have we ever said, hey, let's do a needs assessment. The first step in a strategic plan is to identify that. Let's do a survey, let's find out, a true survey, what is the desire of the community? Because to me, a municipality focuses on core services, potholes. I can't wait for our PCI to come out, because I think we're gonna be way high. But we also, we have to focus on core services, that is what the community desires. Potholes, safe streets, quality parks, response time, they can come into our office and we return their phone calls, technology, right? How do we make everybody's life easy? You know, the social equity committee, I think, is really the digital divide. I think that's one of the things that we don't talk a lot about, that hopefully that comes to the forefront. What can we do as a city, working with our partners, accounting, the school district, anyway, I don't want to go down, but I do think that there's some merit, not only the task, but in a strategic plan to go out and say, community, what are your needs? How does that align with us? And then we can put a short-term, midterm, long-term plan behind it, and then every year we can prioritize and say, okay, where are we and how do we proceed and manage it that way? So I know you didn't ask, but I think there's a lot of merit to considering it and having the discussion. And I understand, mayor, I understand the task and.
No, because what's gonna get cut then, Tom? La Quinta had huge impacts on us, and what got cut was the environment. So we have a public that are all looking at their own individual needs, and what will always get cut, because it has been cut for decades, is the environment, until we have that 104-degree heat wave like we had in 2017, and the one person that died in the Bay Area was a Millbury resident, because we're not prepared for 104-degree continuous no-wind weather, we're not prepared for floods, we're not prepared for these things, because that takes long-term planning. And you can go and interview our public, and we'll get some great ideas, but we are not gonna do the long-term health and safety planning that we already know we need to do.
Yeah, I think, mayor, then that could be.
So what's gonna get cut? We do a strategic plan, I know what will get cut. It's the same staff that does tree ordinance, it's the same staff that does the community development districts that we've talked about, so that we would maintain and have funding for the sidewalk, so that older people don't fall and break their hip and die. There are only so many things we can do, and that program has been on hold since COVID started.
And I don't want to sit here and get yelled at, because we inherited 40 years of neglect. And again, I can say that faithfully, because I have lived here for a very long time, and as a resident experiencing this field, I've saw, I've been here and I've seen the city decline. And now we're in a huge hole and we're coming out of it, and it takes time. It's taken us 40 years to get here, and it's gonna take us some time to get out. And I think, not reprioritization, but prioritization of things, like sea level rise. Sea level rise takes a tremendous amount of our staff time, and that is something helping the environment. That's something that, if we survey the community on a needs assessment, I have no idea if they even, if it's on their radar, but it's up to us as local governments to say, this is important, this has to be at the forefront, above and beyond the core services. So that is part of the environment. But all I'm saying is, we know, but truly, are we, are we in line with what the community needs are? You hear what they are, because people pick up the phone and they call you, they call me, and they're here at the meeting saying, I want this done, I want that done, but truly, from a global perspective, do we know kind of what's important and what the needs are? And that's all I'm saying in terms of, a strategic plan is the first step in getting us there.
Thanks, mayor.
Yeah, no, I agree. Thank you for that comment as well, because I think we have to create systems and environment where we are making data-driven decisions, that we're planning based on facts and knowledge that has been collected. If not, we are going to be doomed to be more whimsical in decision-making, that I believe that we've been doing. I think it's important for us all to have the knowledge that you have, that it's not an individual knowledge, that it is a collective knowledge, that if there is a need for us to have an understanding, that we all should invest in that, that there should be an investment in our continued education of climate change, continued education of the sense of urgency that's needed. I get it, you get it, but there needs to be a collective understanding of it, and not just understanding on the council level, but we have an obligation to educate our community as well, in the decisions that we're making. And so I agree that strategic planning is necessary, but I also agree that continued education is necessary, creating a process that we are making data-driven decisions, that we're not just whimsical in what we want to do as individuals, whether we're creating pressure points for us, a staff or a city manager to act, that we're just making good, sound decisions for the future of the city of Millbury.
Can I ask what you mean by whimsical?
Whimsical, meaning that, hey, you know, you have, you know, you have me as an individual that says, hey, I think we need to do this. I think those decisions, and that's why I asked the questions earlier on public safety, directed questions that we are understanding what our realities are in the city of Millbury, whether it's concerns of, you know, what were we talking about, some of the issues, whether it's the opioid crisis or drug usage, or if we're talking about human trafficking, asking direct questions, so that we're responding to issues that are relevant to the city of Millbury and not just saying, okay, well, I know this is going on in San Francisco, it's unique to San Francisco, not necessarily Millbury, but me as an individual, that's my issue, so I'm going to champion it. We need to make sure that, yes, we do have these concerns, yes, we do need this, and we're educating the community that, yes, we need the canopy, we need the study, the tree ordinance, all those different things, but it cannot be a one issue. That's all.
Okay. Have you guys read? Have you read the Hazard Mitigation Plan? Have you read the Climate Action Implementation Plan? Have you read the general plan? Have you read the Complete Streets Plan? Everything, I'm a little offended that.
You shouldn't be.
Gina and me, who have been on this council, now granted, the previous council fought me on getting a climate action plan for years, but we've got it. The ideas that we've come up with are in the plan. The Social Equity Commission was something that came up from the public, and that came up during my last time as mayor, and I cannot believe it has taken over two years, $200,000, and extreme amounts of time, time that came from environmental programs. If you look at what we have ruled out to do these new things, it comes from environment.
And I get that, but I.
And it is not my whimsical, and it is not my belief.
Listen, it's not.
Things are always done by champions.
Right.
We run for elected office as champions, but before you think that we haven't done the work, then you should read the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is updated every year. You should read the Climate Action Plan and know that these things are based on existing plans that have been vetted through the public.
Right, but yet and still, there has been no movement. It only takes three votes to act on anything, and yet and still, you have three council members that were here, or at least two of you that were here eight years ago, and nothing was done. So it's a matter of, do you want to be effective or right? And if we're trying to be effective and making real change, there's a way to do that, and it definitely isn't pointing a finger at me.
We'll do that. Taking more of our time, city manager, we're looking at mid-year goals, we're looking at changing a goal, if we were to add a strategic plan, what gets cut from our current work plan?
We're not looking at, we're not looking at eliminating any of the goals. All the plans that you rolled off have been in the last four years, so it shows you the amount of work. We are short-staffed. Again, I'm gonna preach, $10 of need, $1 of revenue, and yes, things take time. I can't just wave a magic wand and have a social equity plan. It's a process. We had a consultant, city council said, no, go out and look at another consultant, it takes time. And in government, it's, you know, it's a process. We live in the process, we, community engagement, we have to go out and find consultants, you know, right now, with the city attorney, I mean, you know, it takes time. And so a little bit of patience, a little bit of teamwork, you know, we kicked off, you know, with our consultant, team-building exercise, and so, you know, I understand, I understand that a lot of this builds up, and, you know, again, I say for the last, and we just start ticking things off, but that's where the prioritization comes in. Yes, there are tasks and there are goals, but the council are the policymakers. You tell me what you want, Tom, go plant 300 trees, I will go get it done. It's up to me every day to work with the staff to go out and get it done, I'll tell you, okay, 300 trees is gonna cost us, you know, $400,000, or whatever the budget is. to go out and get it done. I'll tell you, okay, 300 trees is going to cost us, you know, $400,000, whatever the budget is. You approve the budget, we go and we implement it.
If we wanted a tree ordinance right now, what would be stopping us?
Well, so right now, the tree ordinance that I saw, it had 1,200 trees that people could choose from. So it started out down a path, and it was not a proper ordinance. It was not so. What we did is, we said, "Okay, this isn't going to work. We have to simplify it." And so, based on other workloads, you know, it came back in as a city council policy. And now, the ban with our community development department, we're launching it, and it will be forthcoming to the city council. The reason why we are hiring a consultant is because of the ban, so we can get it done.
Right, so it's happening.
It's happening.
And so that's, I guess my concern is just assuming that we're not making progress, and somehow it's intentional. When you need an update, you use your influence as a council member and say, "Hey, staff, I need this brought back on the agenda." Am I correct? Then if we get on the agenda, we would either get an update, or we can add. And if we need to accelerate it, we accelerate it, but it takes three votes to do that.
And that is working together, Vice Mayor, and prioritization and understanding-
Right, and we can prioritize, right? We're the council. We direct you to prioritize. Am I correct?
Correct.
So if we said, "Stop everything and do this now," and we got three votes to do it, it would happen, correct?
Not necessarily.
I thought that's how it worked.
Not when outside issues come in and overwhelm a small community and a small staff. La Quinta has been overwhelming.
Would that have slowed down if we would have directed you to accelerate the process and prioritize it?
It's not just La Quinta, it's other things.
Right, but I'm just saying, in this instance, had this council said, "Hey, put this on a priority, put this on the front burner," would there have been additional movement on this matter? Or would you have pushed back and said, "We can't," because of La Quinta?
No, I mean, it's in progress.
I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, so it is in progress. Again, I understand the mayor's decades of frustration on this. I'm empathetic to it, but we're doing our, you know, I don't want this to turn into, hey, you know, we're going to bust staff here, because I will tell you, our staff, I'll tell you an example. I'm trying to get a tour of SFO. SFO staff, sorry, we only work nine-to-five Monday through Friday. Our staff is out there Sunday morning at 7:00. Our staff is out at night until 10:00 at night. We work very hard. And so I don't want this to get injected into goals, because I will take offense to it, because I will stand here and I will protect what we've done over the last five years up against this incorporation of the city for 48 years. We have done more. I hear it from the community. I don't know if you do. Wow, it's amazing what the city of Millbury is doing. We have a million square feet of Class A that we attracted. Okay, Icon, a corporate headquarters, the very first corporate headquarters in this city. This city let two auto dealerships go. Well, we got one, not one back, but, you know, Lucid, a new auto dealer. We are constantly working on this. The health of the city is important. People want, 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 but it costs money, time and money. If we had time and money, we went all the, you know, if that was not an issue, then... But it's up to us to work as a team, to understand, to say, "These are the priorities." I will go back to Councilmember Kay Allen, and I think what the Vice Mayor was getting at. We really don't know, because we have never asked the community in a survey, "What are your needs? What are your priorities? What's important to you?" And I think that that's an important... We've had the discussion before. COVID hit, and a whole lot of things got in the way, and we have to remember that. I mean, we managed three years of COVID. And the world stopped, and, you know, we built a rec center. We've done things. Anyway, I can go on and on, but...
I'm sorry, before, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Pappin, around 2018, didn't we not do a community?
Around 2018, didn't we do a community survey? Something is flowing in my head that we did do a community survey, and I can't remember what it was in front of, and I'd have to go check my binders, because everything was done in paper back then.
First and foremost, we have. And for those of us who have walked the city, I'm in my fourth term here. So I can tell you, not one district, but the city here. And yes, we do. And if we get to the next item, we will see when we do things like a fire assessment. We do reach, we do polling of the community. We know what the community needs are, and it summarizes to basic needs here, which is the infrastructure, which is public safety, which is fire prevention. Sea level, these things are there. Now, they may not be educated on every incident or everything that we need to get done, as the mayor has said. We do need to get certain things done. But this is an update, and this is what direction we're heading in. Now, when we get to the next item, I think we'll see more clearly. But yes, we do get information from the public, particularly when we have to poll the public for different things here. So it's not that, and the public is, our public is really smart, as we learned from the whole La Quinta issue here. They do their homework. So again, we have specific things here, as the mayor noted here. There are a whole bunch of reports, and maybe we should list them all. But what we need to do is focus on what we have here. The city manager listed a whole bunch of things that are not even listed in our goals, that the city is working on. And I think keeping the public informed about what the city is working on is very important. One thing I was going to say, when we talk about the infrastructure, listing how many how many miles of pipe, how many, all those things that we've done, the taxpayers want to know those kind of things. So, you know, being sidetracked by, and I really get offended here too, when you say the public wasn't involved in the goal setting. They were. They're invited to. Now, the participation may not be what we'd like to see, but that's a misrepresentation. It's a very public procedure here. And you don't like the way it's being done. If you'd like to suggest other ways to do that and further planning, that's fine. But we need to move on here to get some things done. And, I mean, really, so to answer the mayor's question, yes, we do, we have, and we do it more than I think a lot of people up here even realize. So I would like to suggest that we have a very important item to get to next, because it infects our overall budget and our public safety. So unless there are specifics, thank you.
So then, if we look as the goal-setting for next year, is the feeling that we should just do it exactly like we did last year?
Councilmember, it's an open process. Throughout the process, you can bring up specific ways, even as we come into the process. You can suggest, you know, I don't run the process there, but you can suggest a way to move forward here. But again, I think you've misrepresented the entire process here. You've suggested you would like to see more long-term here, and, you know, we can shape it in any way, shape or form. It's not written in stone. So if you would like to do that before the next goal-setting session, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But to stop everything now, to say, "Hey, I think we really need to educate the entire council here on all the different things that have been studied, yet still need to be done," that kind of thing would be helpful to everyone.
Councilwoman, in terms of last year's process, we sent out the request to council in January, maybe early February. By March, nobody had turned anything in. By April, nobody had turned anything in. By May, that's a responsibility each one of us bear, because we're a team. So we're having the team-building work, so that next year, when the mayor asks for the goals to come in, "Did I like the process? Did I like the three points, which was different than we did it the year before?" No, the process can be approved upon. But that's not the same thing as now asking, at a mid-year goal-setting, to add to our goals a strategic plan. Now, I think I'm getting from the Councilwoman Pappin that she and I are on the same page, that I don't want to add an additional goal. There already is another goal that we added that we were very successful at. Last January, we hired a lobbying firm, and we got a law that we pushed that will have international ramifications on artificial grass. That's another win that we had, but it also wasn't in our goals. But for Councilwoman Pappin and I, the way we were originally brought up is that staff has all the work they have to do. It's required. It's required by laws, local and everything. And then there's this little bit of work where we, as elected officials, get to suggest some things. We get to champion some things. Now, that's under a different city manager. Maybe that needs to be explained in the terms of our current city manager, what that is on that. And then, I golly wish that the state of California would stop adding 50 or 500 new housing laws were signed in. I think it's 500 new housing laws signed in by Governor Newsom. All of those come back to staff to have to update all of the ordinances with it. So we don't get to dictate all their time. It's this tiny little portion, and it already exists in our plans. Maybe not the empty storefront ordinance, but we've got a problem downtown. If we're going to wait for the BID, I'm sad, because the old blood bank is sitting there empty, and I pass it going to the car wash, and it's full of a business that we don't want in Millbury. They're renting out the parking lot for cars. You know, so that's all going to get put on hold yet again because of other things coming in.
Well, Mayor, so it's not on hold. It's a code enforcement violation that our code enforcement officer continues to follow up on. So it's not on hold, and...
The empty storefront ordinance is on hold.
Yes, yeah.
Which would go to that business and say, "Hey, the two brothers in San Jose, you need to get a business in there," not rent out the parking lot. That's what that ordinance is going to do. That business in the old Schneider clothing store, which has been vacant for 20 years, would have to get a business in there.
Also, if I may, kind of shift, go ahead, Councilmember.
I was just going to say two things. One, the process that we used last year, yes, it went late because of participation, but also, as a new council member, I went back and watched the goal-setting process from the year before, so I knew what to prepare for, and it was the same process, despite like the timeline. And it was the identical process of submitting items, discussing them, having a number of votes to narrow it down. And again, to me, that doesn't feel strategic. With a method like that, that's how you get something, you know, passed over for eight years, versus getting prioritized. So I'm not asking to add a new goal into this. I'm suggesting, next year, let's do it different. And my suggestion was to do a strategic plan instead of, I don't know what to call the method that we did. It's not even goal-setting, because they're not goals. It's picking a list of actions and voting and choosing actions. Those actions reach a goal. You know, the action could be, you know, pave five streets this year. You know, the goal of that is, you know, safer roadways, city beautification, things like that. That's the goal. And then what's the action to meet the goal? So we're not even doing goal-setting. We're calling it that, but that's not what we're doing. So I'm not asking to do, slide something in mid-year. I'm saying, as we prepare for next year, let's be more thoughtful. This isn't, this would be replacing the way we do goal-setting currently. And it wouldn't ignore all the plans that we already have. It would ideally bring those together, so that we see the holistic picture of the work that we're doing. And again, it sets those priorities, so that year over year, something doesn't get ignored. That it's more likely to guarantee that something will be there, and it will happen, because we said, "Environment is a strategic initiative." Well, if we said that, then we don't ignore something in eight years of voting at the goal-setting, right? So I'm trying to move away from that. Does that make sense? So that was my hope.
So I think, on that note, one of the things that this city hasn't done is to adopt levels of service. So for example, we have only two sworn deputies on duty in the city at any given time. I think that should be four. That's what I would recommend. Okay, so that's a level of service. How do we get there? Okay, what's the funding behind it? Okay, and so, you know, we know that a deputy fully loaded is, you know, close to $400,000, right? Benefits, fully loaded, equipment. So we can plan for that. I mentioned PCI, which is Payment Condition Index. Level of services, you know, hey, we would like to adopt a council goal to increase that 5%. Well, I know to increase that 5% is about $6.5 million, okay, to increase it five points. So come back to you and say, "Okay, we don't have $6.5 million. We have half of that." So we can have a multiple-year, the vision of the city councils, increase the PCI 5%. Okay, we can do that every three years because of our revenue. Our revenue gets better, we get a stronger, you know, revenue stream coming in. Then I come back to the council and say, "Hey, good news. We can now accelerate your goal of 5% instead of every three years. We can do that every two years, or we can do it every..." So that's, I think, where we need to go. And that's why I'm just trying to communicate with the council and provide some feedback that we can get there. And I do think that that strategic planning process is a good mechanism to get there. It's not a goal, it's a process, is how I'm looking at it. So if that helps.
No, I agree. Thank you for those comments. I was kind of aligned with what I was going to say, is we have to be more... Excuse me? Well, she did call me after. If you want to talk, go ahead. Excuse me? Well, I keep hearing comments, and so I can't talk if I'm hearing comments, so I'll wait, I'll wait.
Go, Vice Mayor.
No, I'll wait. Like I said, I want to gather my thoughts. I don't like being talked over. Thank you.
Let me try this. I don't think the process is the problem at which we arrived those quote-unquote "goals" that we did this past year and the year before. It's what goal we put into that process. And I think that's what I'm hearing over and over again, right? And it is true, you know, $10 of needs and $1 of revenue. So if I may, my next goal, the first goal, is instead of $10 of needs and $1 revenue, I want to increase to $3 revenue. That's my goal. Now, that would triple, requires triple our revenue. But we also have to discuss how to get there. Now, that would be a goal, because if we have that, then maybe we have more resources to address climate change, tree ordinance, or many other stuff that we want to get done, right? So, but at the end of the day, we still have to give staff directions as to... We set the direction, we still need to figure out a way to drive the ship there. So I think that's kind of where... And it is a political process, right, which requires some reinforcement over time in order to ensure that this course of action that we plotted, let's say in 2024 in January, for example, right, doesn't get derailed somehow. And so, that's where the direction, I think, we need to look into as we embark on, and what you said at the beginning, I actually wholeheartedly agree that that's where we need to be. But it takes this entire council to focus on those goals, as we agreed upon it, and in fact, plot out the action plan that implements those goals. And that's what needs to happen. If that summarizes it.
If I may, I think, you know, kind of a partnership here is why I'm injecting. But our revenue is $1,739 per capita. Okay, that is not very high, compared to kind of what the average is, right around $3, or, excuse me, right around $3,000, right? So a healthy... But again, it comes down to, you know, we can't- So a healthy, but again, it comes down to, you know, we can't control the markets, but we can improve, right? Economic development, housing, more rooftops. More rooftops brings in more buying power to support our commercial business. One of the things that we talked about prior to the last election is not requiring ground floor retail in every residential project because it's not going to be absorbed. Let's get our downtown core healthy to where we get the problem that, hey, council, it's too busy downtown, you know, what are you going to do about it? That's the problem we want. Rooftops, employees, that combination, that's going to get us now, yeah, our costs go up because the population goes up, but that revenue coming in from other streams to maintain a healthy economic development perspective, and that's exactly right, Councilmember Fung, is then that allows us to do these other things that we want.
Thank you, City Manager. Vice Mayor, and then hearing Councilwoman Papen, we're at 10:22. We're going to have to ask for an extension in 40 minutes. We've got the fire assessment. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was just going to say, again, like I said, thank you for your comments because they're spot on. I don't think we're that far away as a council of what we need to do, just the how. We got to utilize best practices. We're not the first city to have this as a, as a challenge. So we can look and utilize best practices as to how to make decisions based on data and the right data. We don't know what we don't know and we have to acknowledge that. I'm talking about me, not talking about anyone else up here. And so in order to do that, we have to educate ourselves on what we don't know and how best to move forward. What I would like to ask is have we done a staffing study? Do we know that we have the right amount of staff to do the work that the city council is expecting? We don't know. Have we done the right sizing study? You just mentioned making sure that we have, you know, the right amount of deputies. And so that's what we have to do, not just for our deputies, but we have to do it for departments. Do we have enough space? I know right now we have people on top of each other here for our staff. And so we have to expand. We have to talk about what does that mean? Does that mean generating more revenue? Yes, it does. Does that mean being more aggressive when we're having conversations with our partners? Yes, it does. But we have to talk about it, whether it's something we can do today or it's something that we can aspire to do. And on how we get there is having strategic conversations like what I believe was being suggested, not an actual process of a blue ribbon committee that's going to take a year to complete. I think just be more strategic and correct me if I'm wrong, just us be more strategic on how we do things. If we're going to say this is something we want to do, we want to say, okay, in six months, we're going to check in and this is where we should be. I think that's what we're talking about. And I think that's what we all want. That if eight years ago, when the tree study was suggested, then I'm sure if someone would have said, hey, we want a tree study and we're going to look back in, in four years or two years and we expect to see 25% done, we would be a lot closer today if we had those checks and balances. And so I think that's what we're hearing. I think we need to acknowledge that and trust our staff to know that they hear us. And then they will adjust and make sure that working with the mayor or incoming mayor, that we'll get to a process that will align all of those goals. So, thank you.
And if I may address that, so I do know what our utilization is and I know what our need is. That's why we've been hiring as revenue comes in to address that. That's why we are bussing at the seams at City Hall. Now we are putting forth something that hasn't even come to the council. I'm looking at the possibility, and I don't, I don't want to get ahead of this, of leasing space on Broadway for our building and planning and engineering department. We have a presence, you know, on Broadway, lease office that's vacant, create, you know, activity. I'm even looking at, at ideas of City Hall expansion, relocating City Hall, things that we're cooking, but it's not ready for prime time, as they say, to bring it to the city council yet. But, you know, these are things that we do know as staff. The city council, you know, you rely on us. So I do know what that need is. And I work with the department heads and we've done studies on, on utilization and things. So, you know, and that comes in the budget, right? Hey, we want to add these two positions. And we work with, the way, the way that I manage is all the department heads come in and it's not just, we're going to cut environment, we're going to cut recreation, the low-hanging fruit. It's no, we don't do that. It's, okay, where to the level of, you know, service delivery and the needs and direction of the council, how do we, how do we do that? And again, that's why I keep preaching, growing our tax base, money and time.
All right. Are we done? This was a discussion? It wasn't an action?
It's, it's, it's...
Oh, it is an action.
It's agendaized for an action if the council so, so desires.
So it started off as a recommendation to add something to the existing goals. Is that now not something according to the Vice Mayor? It's if we can think more strategically in everything we do, then it's not an additional item to be added to the goals.
I think it's a...
Am I correct?
I think it's a process is what we, because I think, as Vice Mayor, I think we are close...
Well, a process is not a plan. I heard a plan. A plan has a process, but what I heard the Vice Mayor say is to think more strategically, which also means that city council, when they go to the city manager saying, I want X, Y, Z, also have to be strategic, which means going back and looking at what we currently have for our work plan for the year.
Well, that's, that's when you hear me push back and say, okay, let's agendaize it, any more than two hours of staff time. But here's what I suggest. Why don't we continue this item? Continue to think about it and maybe the second meeting in January, we bring it back for further discussion and we can, you know...
I think if, if I might, through the chair, through the council. Look, if council members have a suggestion on how to do it better, I think we're all open to that, but please present it prior to so that we have something to look at. We really need to get to the fire assessment or we're not going to have any money to do anything here. I understand the thought process. I appreciate the update. If you have more specifics to be more efficient, more effective, of course, I think we can all be unified in that process, but please suggest it so that we're not kind of spinning wheels in a direction that won't achieve the desired effect, which I think so many people ever tried to present today.
I have a real quick one. Wait a minute.
We really do need to, we're at 10:30.
Give me less than 30 seconds. So as we put in new strategic goals, there need also be, in addition to the goal, a metric to those goal so that we can measure that our success at the end of the year and half-year check-in, whatever that might be. That's my suggestion.
Thank you.
So Mayor, you know, maybe we continue this item, second meeting in January, and we do it as a study session. And then that way we can roll up our sleeves, share ideas, come together and see the best way to proceed because I think, you know, not to put words in the count, I think it's a, it is a process, right? And a strategic plan, yeah, that's the name of it, but I, I look at it and, you know, it's a process how we formulate and then it allows us multiple years, right? Short-term, midterm, long-term. But why don't we do that? And then that way you can all think about it.
Again, I'm trying to be efficient. Do we need a motion to make that kind of action or is it just a continuation? What's the process?
It's an action. Just let me get the process.
Just direction to move with a...
Okay, so it doesn't have to be a motion, it can be a direction.
Yep.
Councilwoman Papen.
I would like to make a motion. If council members would like to present something to staff, then we will take it up again in January. But until that time, I think we need to move on. So I'd like to make that motion. If council members have specifics they would like to present to staff, then we re-agendaize it in January and that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Discussion.
Hearing, seeing no discussion, city clerk, call the vote.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The motion passes by five to zero to, for council member to present specifics to the staff in order to bring the item back to council at the second meeting of January. Motion passes by five to zero.
Okay, finishing. Existing business moving into new business. It is 10:31. This is new business agenda item number 11, approving engineer's report and declaring intention to update fire suppression assessment and conduct property owner balloting on annual assessment commencing in fiscal year... In fiscal year 2425. I'm confused. I thought we were planning to do the vote in '24.
Yeah, so, so great question.
But this is to go into, into action in the next, okay, I'm sorry.
Correct, so it could commence July 1st or January 1st of '25.
Got it, got it. When the old assessment expires.
Correct, that's right.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce Mr. Mike Sung, our finance director for the presentation. We also have our, our team of consultants that are here to answer questions as well that Mike will explain.
All right. Thank you, City Manager Williams. Hello again, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Today we're going to talk about the engineer's report for the fire assessment. Let's go ahead and move to the next slide, please. So just as a background, since 2004, Millbrae's had a fire assessment. We've maintained that and that's actually a local source of revenue for us. It's not, it can't be taken by the county or the state because the assessment is levied onto the property tax owners. So just a little aside, and I pass this on later to our consultant from Harris, who is the actual engineer, Rick Clark. One thing that I should mention is back in 1996, there was something called Prop 218 and it was kind of known as the voter's right to tax, I guess. That's the more common term that they use. What it basically did was it gave voters the right to vote on assessments that levied some type of assessment on their actual properties. And any of these assessments, there has to be a benefit that is given for the levy that's imposed on there. So this assessment was renewed in 2009 and also in 2014. It is set to expire in 2024 unless it's reauthorized. All parcels will pay this assessment and if approved by the voters, the assessment will continue to, you know, ensure firefighting and lifesaving equipment are kept up to date, keeping rapid response times and maintaining the effectiveness up to the level that, you know, the community expects and deserves. Next slide, please. So right now, I'm going to go ahead and actually pass this off to our engineer over at Harris. His name is Rick Clark. He's going to talk to you a little bit more detail about the engineer's report and the methodology behind things.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor Snyder and council members. Again, my name is Rick Clark from Harrison Associates. Thanks for the opportunity to discuss the preliminary engineer's report with you for this new fire suppression assessment. The report itself uses a budget provided by Central County Fire, who provides those services for the city, information from the National Fire Protection Agency, U.S. Fire Administration and other previous studies, including the previous report that was done in 2014, which also happened to be by Harrison Associates, although I had nothing to do with it. And then this information that we gather from those agencies and from the other information derives what we assign as risk factors for fire and property loss factors based on the information we're getting from those different agencies. And then that determines the, what we term a fire, total fire suppression assessment factor. It's, it's all detailed in the engineer's report. I don't think I need to go through each of that, how it all works now, but the engineer's report details how all that comes together. As Mike mentioned, because this fire suppression assessment is considered a new assessment, excuse me, that would be, excuse me, to get to the next engineer's report. Next one, please. Yeah, okay, thank you. The fire suppression assessment is considered to be a new assessment and as a result, because of Prop 218, we have to send out assessment ballots and a notice of public hearing to all of the affected property owners, a minimum of 45 days prior to the public hearing date. That date, I believe, is the 27th of February, which believe I, makes the deadline date for mailing ballots, January 12th. In any case, those items have to be done and the ballot itself, there are certain requirements for the ballot itself, that's on the previous slide. I'm sorry, I had my, I got ahead of myself a little bit, but the proposed assessment amount has to be on, on, on the ballot, total amount of assessments for the entire district has to be included in that information. Duration of the assessments, like is it going to expire? When is it going to expire? All of that. The reason for the assessment, so basically why are we charging this, why are we asking for this charge? How it's calculated, the date, time of the public hearing and actually some, another one that's not listed on here is information and directions on how to submit, properly fill out and return your ballot. And again, the assessments have to be supported by a detailed engineer's report, which is what you have as part of your, your package. Next slide, please. As you can see, the rate here for a single-family home or duplexes is $299 per year. That is for per dwelling unit. Multi-family homes at $214. There are a few other land use codes. Most of the commercial, in fact, all of the commercial properties are based on a square foot calculation. Hotels are based on the number of rooms they have, nursing homes, beds, things like that, the number of beds in a nursing home, excuse me. And there's a couple of little, smaller number of parcels that are done on a per parcel basis. They get a much more, much reduced level of the assessment of $299 based on the fact that we're trying to tie the benefit to the actual amount that the property is paying. So that really does finish my portion of this assessment, or excuse me, this presentation. I wanted to get it back over to Mike so we can finish this up and I have the feeling you all have a bunch of questions you want to ask, so we'll give you time to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Next slide, please. So as Rick had mentioned, the assessment ballot, for the assessment ballot, the notice in the ballot would be mailed at least 45 days prior to the public hearing, tentatively scheduled for February 27th, 2024. At the latest, it would be January 12th that we would send it out, but we're actually targeting that for around January 5th right now. If the majority of property owners who returned the assessment ballot are actually opposed to the assessment, weighted by the assessment amount, the assessment would not go forward. And this assessment that was initially created back in 2004, has not kept up with inflation and has not been increased over the last 19 years. So we'd recommend that the new one would have a proposed adjustment that has some type of adjustment attached it, so it does keep pace. Next slide, please. So if the fire assessment isn't approved, there's a lot of things that would make it really difficult for us to make some choices because it is quite a large amount of money budget-wise. This amount for the fire assessment is locally controlled. This is something that Sacramento and the county actually can't take away from us. Just as a reminder, it is set to expire next year. Also, we've had recent actions by the county, you know, it underscores the need that we need to maintain this local level of funding so that we can have these services that our residents expect and deserve. So part of this really is, we might have to make some difficult choices if the assessment isn't approved, including the possibility of closing a fire station or even reducing staffing by fire services. Next slide, please. So we've already conducted some public outreach. We've done a survey of the property owners and these are just property owners because the property owners would be the ones to vote on this by our research professional. We've also shown that the property owners are highly interested in maintaining the fire and medical, fire services existing, the existing assessment provides, and they are inclusive of the willingness for them to actually, to pay for these continued services. So upcoming things that we're planning to do are to send out informational letters via physical and digital outreach. They're going to be sent prior and concurrently with the assessment balloting period. City would continue to outreach and inform property owners and gather feedback in the process as well. This would entail a lot of digital as well as physical outreach, also even the town halls or some type of community meeting, and we'll also partner with our community groups. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, next steps, we're going to provide this information via mail and email for the upcoming ballot period. We're going to mail, we would mail these out at least 45 days before the public hearing. We're going to mail, we would mail these out at least 45 days before the public hearing. And we continue to have information outreach. I should also mention that we have partnered with the Edwards Group and for community outreach as well. They've done a lot of polling for outreach work for a lot of different measures out there, so they're very experienced with that. And we also want to make sure that the timing is, works well, because if we get this in a little bit earlier, we won't run into the 2024 presidential primary, which voters would get confused because that would actually go to all voters. This actually only goes to the property owners in this instance. And just another reminder, the public hearing is tentatively scheduled for February 27, 2024, and the ballots are tabulated as of the end of the public hearing on February 27, 2024. So people have the ability to vote all the way up until the end of the public hearing. After that, we tally the ballots, and if a majority isn't against it, we'd come back to council and suggest adopting a resolution to continue the fire suppression assessment. So that would be probably at a council meeting right after, or perhaps the second meeting in March, but we'd need to get all the ballots in first and then actually count them. Next slide, please. So tonight's action, we're, staffs recommending that the City Council adopt the two attached resolutions, which will preliminarily approve the Engineers' Report in support of the updated fire suppression assessment, beginning in fiscal year 2425, declare its intentions to conduct a property owner balloting on the matter of this new assessment and to levy annual assessments commencing in fiscal year 2024, '25. I'd like to also mention that I have Rick Clark from Harris here to answer any questions as well as Jennifer Longley and also Brian Godby, our research professional. So with that, we'll be fielding any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sung. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Questions?
Mayor, real quick, if I may, you brought this up. Recognize that Mayor did read the staff report. So there is a typo on page seven and page eight I wanted to quickly bring to your attention. On page seven of the Engineers' Report, the last paragraph, "Single-family residential properties represent almost 92%." That is a typo. It should be 80.63% to reflect Figure Three, the first line on Figure Three, as well as on page eight, last paragraph, again, since "single-family residential properties represent almost," it says 92%. The Figure Four is correct. It's 81.8%. So I just wanted to bring those typos to the council's attention.
So I will hit you with a couple of mine. First of all, I thought it was an amazing report. I thank you so much. I really, really appreciate the details in the chart because I have, I come from a local government background, and I come from commercial residential, and the data shows clearly that we're 80% plus residential. And that's one of the reasons why we have so little money, and that's why that term that Tom used earlier, where we have $1,734, when other nearby cities, and it would be great to have that comparison, or more in the $3,000 range, or what we thought for Colma, a million dollars per capita maybe in Colma, you know, what you can do for your community when you've got that kind of exchange. So my overall question was, and I see that we're trying to get back to, I think it was 27 or 8%, now we're down to 17%. We're trying to get some of the percentage there. How do other cities completely fund their fire departments? Just in case I'm asked this question.
So it actually varies city by city. Some cities generally use a lot of their general fund if they do have the economic makeup to afford that. You'll actually see a lot of other cities, they will have a fire assessment when they can't fund it through solely their general fund. And probably ask Rick, he has a lot of experience with a lot of this.
That's good enough. It's, so there's kind of a mixture in there, and again, because we are so lacking in commercial property and commercial businesses, our residents pay up a bigger share. Because what we hear a lot is, we pay more for a range of utilities on that. So just so that we're ready for that. Do the parcels, and remember, I've got that map. I think Mr. Sung and Mr. Williams have seen it, but we already know that this is, this came from the county assessors, and it would be nice to get this or a fixed version of it. The pink properties don't pay any tax at all. Those are basically city lands, city parking lots, but it also includes SFPUC. Caltrain doesn't pay anything. Do they, do all of these properties not pay? Is that that, or is it exempt 21 parcels that don't pay any form of property tax? Or would they be exempt from paying the fire assessment?
No, I can answer that one for you, Mr. Mayor. The answer, the simple answer is no. Those SFO parcels, Caltrans parcels, city-owned parcels are no longer exempted from assessments based on Proposition 218, again, back in 1996, unless they can show that they don't benefit from the services being provided, which can be kind of hard to do if you've got a, you know, a building sitting on that property.
Thank you. Yay, love to hear that.
So Mayor, you understand that they don't pay property tax, but they do pay the assessment.
They pay the assessment. On page 17 of the staff report, I didn't do the page number in the actual engineering report, it says that there are 21 parcels that are exempt, and I just didn't know why.
Those are, I'd have to go and look at the data for sure, but my recollection with those is that those are smaller parcels, unbuildable parcels, rights of way, things like that.
Okay. Or an easement or something?
Utility strips, parcels, yeah, basically, yeah, nothing on them anyway.
All right, so that's good. Got that one. I'm just trying to see which of mine. When I read through, and your slide clearly says, "A home or a duplex place, $299," where do ADUs and junior ADUs fit in? And then I think I saw it later in the staff report, but it wasn't in the slide. So the public knows where an ADU and a junior ADU fit.
Yeah. Well, that's something that I think we all need to, we, you, C. staff, need to discuss and determine at some point. Right now, we've identified the parcels that we are aware of that have an ADU, and we have assigned a, if I remember correctly, a full benefit unit to that ADU. That can be changed, updated, revised by City Council if you want to say, hey, you know what, ADUs are part of the initial property. We don't want to assess those, anything additional. You could say that, yes, we want to assess them another full benefit unit, like we do a single-family home, or really anywhere in between. But it really would come down to what the City Council wants to have. And unfortunately, this is, I don't have a straight answer for you because ADUs are kind of a, they're becoming so much more prevalent over the last few years, and cities are starting to say, okay, we need to address these. And that's kind of where we are right now.
So let me throw this out there. If you've got a single-family home, $299. You've got a duplex, it's two times, $299.
That's correct.
You've added an ADU, isn't that two times $299? The junior ADU is a little bit weirder because a junior ADU is almost like you put a kitchen in a bedroom and call it a junior ADU.
Yeah, yeah, see, I don't know, I don't think our data had any distinction between a straight ADU or a junior ADU.
So do we have to get this?
In fact, the county's data doesn't show ADUs at all.
So do we need to get that clarified in terms of voting for the resolutions tonight? Because the charts, the charts and the engineering plan are very specific. So I'm just throwing that out there. And my last one, going back to La Quinta, it's currently paying a fire assessment based on 100 occup, 100 units, if I read the apartment, the hotel thing. If the county purchase it, they'll still have to pay the fire assessment, but they're going to be going from 99 or 100 units to 45 or 60 or 65, depending on what the numbers kept changing at the Board of Supes. So every, and to my knowledge, is that the first time we've had a property that actually has reduced the number of units as opposed to adding units? So it's just, it might be just one wrinkle out there in terms of trying to budget out that money.
Mayor, no, it's, that's a hotel, so you can't compare that reducing, you know, I mean, it's.
Well, no, because it'll stop being a hotel and it'll go to the residential rate under MFD.
Right, but it's not 99 residential units. It will be 75 residential units.
Or 45 or 65. Okay, all right. I just, that's when I read it. Again, I really appreciate the report. I obviously am happy to support this. To the public out there, first of all, to the fire department, having come to my house three times, I think, in the last six months, as my mom is 96 years old, I couldn't be more grateful. I also know the status of Building 37 and the repairs that it needs, the work that it needs. I'm less sure what we need in 38. There are some real needs for this, and I was happy to see that the survey data came back so much in support, but you've got my, my full support in this. And again, great plan. Thank you. Nobody else has questions? Wasn't it a great chart full of numbers and data? Okay, move approval. Thank you, Council.
Just to clarify, with the two corrections to the Engineers' Report.
Right, right. Yeah, it had a lovely number. I like that number even better, but with the two corrections, move approval.
And that was all we, I apologize.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Pappan, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Open for public comment? Oh, shoot, oh, well, opening it for public comment. I have no paper slips.
Mayor, we do not have any paper slip, and there's no hands raised online.
Okay, so zero online. Closing public comment, bringing it back to council. Any further discussion? City Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 11 passed by a vote of 5 to 0 with two corrections to the Engineers' Report. Motion carried by 5 to 0.
Okay, technically, we've got seven minutes, five people to report out on that. Who would like to go first? Go ahead, Councilwoman Pappan.
Very short. I just ask that we close in memory of former Sheriff and former Supervisor Don Horsley. And then I wasn't at the last meeting, but we lost a resident, Helen Franco. Did we, we did that one already?
I don't think we did Helen Franco, but I thought I saw a letter. But let's, I'll add that we're also closing in memory of former First Lady Rosalind Carter.
And, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Hey, I'd love to report out from the NLC City Summit. It was very fun and exciting to participate in one of the most comprehensive municipal conferences of the year. NLC is a consortium of locally elected officials, municipal leaders, experts and industry leaders who gather to share expertise and exchange knowledge that will benefit cities like Millbury. My participation this year was, was an opportunity to make new connections, access resources, and gain knowledge that will help me in supporting our overall mission and to help us thrive. The list of conference workshops that I benefited from include homelessness and housing, infrastructure and identifying grants such as support, infrastructure improvements, public safety and violence, reimagining community safety, also taking a collaborative approach to improve public safety. Additionally, I will be expressing my interest to serve, I was also, I was invited to express my interest to serve on the Federal Advocacy Committee on Public Safety and Crime Prevention Committee. And then lastly, the innovation and technology workshops I participated in, I had the opportunity to participate in in-depth conversations related to AI, its current and future uses by municipalities, and how to best govern and provide oversight for its uses. Other workshops, themes were provided, but I am but one person, and I strongly believe that as a member organization, our city would greatly benefit from sending staff and council members in the future as our collective city vision and success is directly tied to the decisions we make, and a more informed council and staff would only help us thrive. Additionally, there were numerous networking and resources opportunities. There were over 4,000 elected officials and staff under one roof that I had access to with resources that I could leverage to help address day-to-day challenges in our city, one of which was the Sister Cities International, which I had the opportunity to have a really good conversation with as our representative on our own Sister Cities Committee. And one of the things that was brought up was how we pay our dues. And I think the dues are no more than $450 or $500, and the dues are being paid by the committee versus the city. And I think that in the future, we, I would love for us to have a conversation on committees and commissions that have dues to pay to member, to organizations like Sister Cities International, that that comes out of our, our general fund budget, or we find funds to, to pay those dues. What else? And that's, that's my report. If there's any questions on that, if not, I'm going to continue. Communication, there was a communication from a resident that expressed a safety concern of an individual seeking to enter a home acting as an agent of our city. This is very serious, and there should be follow-up to this council and to the resident and other residents that were harmed by this invasion of property, privacy, and potential illegal act. I'm not sure if everyone, if anyone else got that communication via email. Additionally, there have been other complaints of what seems to be concerns that have not been followed up on or responded to with regards to similar concerns, and I will work with staff to, to make sure that they're aware of these other complaints or concerns that community residents are having. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. What I found, the NLC staff are great at following up, too, and they, they keep checking back with you, which is really lovely. So I appreciate your recommendations to send more people. I found my visit, or my trip in March, really incredible. I'm glad you found it helpful. Councilwoman Cahalan?
I just have two quick items. I want to just continue to encourage folks to sign up for CERT. That's our Community Engagement Response Team, and it's community residents being trained in disaster preparedness and disaster response, and being ready to be volunteers in the case of a disaster. We are in need of more folks, and especially needing folks throughout the whole city to ensure that all our neighborhoods are supported if there was an emergency. So I just registered the other night, and I'm looking forward to participating in that, and excited to hear that the second Citizens Academy is coming. I'm a proud alumni of the inaugural series, and I really highly encourage folks to sign up and participate. I hope we get a full class for our second round. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman?
I'll be very brief. I am holding a town hall meeting in January 6, 2024, 10:00 a.m. at the Jacuti Room. I want this to be the first order of business for the new year. This session, I want this to be, certainly, every resident within the city is welcome to join, and I want the residents to do most of the talking. I want to be able to listen, just as the City Manager had brought up before, I want to, this is an opportunity for residents telling us what we should focus on in the upcoming year. So I want this to be the focus of this town hall meeting in January 6. And staff will be sending out notices and flyers, shared on social media relatively shortly. I want to thank the staff for putting all of this together. Thank you so much. Hannah Moran's been there all night in the back row. Thank you so much for getting all of this arranged, and also the staff, Elaine, as well. Just also wanted to commend the staff for putting all these agendas together ahead of this meeting, making all the public, keeping all the public abreast with all the changes that we're making in the city and the agenda that we need to be talking about tonight. So they work extremely hard, and they did that, they get that done before the holiday. So kudos to the staff. Thank you so very much.
And new grand opening?
The grand opening of a new noodle place on Broadway. It was extremely well-attended. Thank you, Councilmember Pappan. And I were there having an opportunity to meet the owner and also the noodle master, which is exceptional. So, but, yeah, anyway, I don't want to get past 11 o'clock here, so, thank you so much.
City Clerk, what?
Yeah.
It's an international
They have three days of $1.99 per noodle, and it was just, you know, around the block in three circles.
City Clerk, we're at 11 o'clock. Do I need a motion, or can we just kind of skip five more minutes? Okay. All right. The Barrier Water Supply and Conservation Agency celebrated its 20th anniversary. They recognized Councilwoman Gina Pappan and Assemblywoman Diane Pappan as the daughters of the founder of the creation, founder of Basqua, and both got to, got to speak there. Dan Quigg was also recognized, and it was a lovely event, and then a board meeting that went almost until 11 o'clock on that. I have been reappointed to the Cal Cities Transportation Community Communications and Public Works Policy Committee, which works on legislation in those areas. I guess we're not having a mayor civic coordinating meeting for November, which would be the day after tomorrow, so the next one won't be until January, Mayor Civic Coordinating Meeting?
Correct, Mayor. It, it fell on Thanksgiving weekend, so we
Right, I saw the cancellation, but I didn't see anything else. Community Enhancement Advisor Committee now has a, a full house, and couldn't be happier. They're very excited to welcome the new people. However, they had an incredibly productive fiscal year 2223, but most of the work done in 2022, and they are basically on hold and unable to move forward on much of anything. They would like to go forward on Adopt a Drain, which was something that we started before the Atmospheric River of 2021. So need to hear back from that if they can work on something, because otherwise they're waiting for the tree ordinance. The, we had an absolutely fantastic East Side Specific Plan Subcommittee meeting, and that was with City Manager Williams and Economic Development, Morgeson. Really good work, what we're trying to do, and Tom, please correct me on this. We're working on what should go into an RFP and the kind of consultant that we want. We don't want a consultant that's going to say, this is what we've done in other cities. We want a consultant that looks at Millbrae, and it's a unique situation, and with the east side, with the freeway, the flooding, the airport, et cetera, multiple agency, public agency, landowners, looking for a consultant in that RFP. I don't, we didn't really talk about the timeline, but it should be coming back to council late winter, early spring with an RFP.
Correct, Mayor.
On that. But it was really a terrific meeting on all of the things that we could do on that side. All of us will be interviewed for legislation for next year. One of the things that didn't happen after our interviews last January, we never got a report of where everybody felt was important for legislation. So for this go-around, it'll be easier for the mayor and the ledge committee to know what council priorities are, what they think are priorities, or as I said, we have some priorities to protect our solid waste program that I think need to be on the list, because it may take two or three years to get that going. So just know that that is coming up, and it will be, it will be the, oh, and this morning, the city manager and Public Works Director Batista and I walked the Bayfront Park. It was an absolutely stunning morning, very early for me at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning, looking at the sea level rise. Staff will be working on a letter to go to one shoreline. The deadline is November 30. And I thought of a few more things as I got home, Public Works Director, in terms of if they go ahead with the wall that they presented to us, how it may hurt our ability to fundraise for the work that we need to do on the east side and the canals. Much work to be go, much work to be done. City Manager, we are next online for LAFCO to do our, our service needs assessment. I'm not calling it the right name, but we talked about the land that is cut out of Millbrae, that belongs to SFO, that we might be thinking of incorporating back. So I think we should talk about the services that we provide for that land. If that SFO land catches on fire, it's our fire trucks. So let's start setting that case when that LAFCO report goes. I don't know exactly when it's due. I'm an alternate to LAFCO, so now I'm learning all things about incorporating unincorporated areas.
Yeah, Mayor, it's a sphere of influence.
Sphere of, okay, sphere of influence on that. So if we can include that in our response to LAFCO, they are, a number of things have come to LAFCO recently where there's little teeny chunks of county unincorporated, and for example, in Hillsborough and Burlingame, and if it incorporated, that would save the county of providing a bunch of fire and other needs, and it seems to make more economic sense to be part of the local city. There may be some arguments we can use with that. And really, that's just from what I gained from reading Hillsborough and Burlingame's reports on that, and they just approved both of those last week. So with that, that is my update. Councilwoman Pappan, could you give the lady that you brought up? I don't have her last name.
Franco.
Lynn Franco?
Helen Franco.
Oh, Helen.
I sent it to Elaine before.
Ah.
It was in the paper.
Okay. So closing in memory of longtime Millbrae resident Helen Franco, also our former First Lady Rosalynn Carter. Her funeral was today. It was actually quite beautiful on that. And as someone who has worked on President Carter's Habitat for Humanity projects, I never met him or the late, or First Lady Rosalynn, but it's a great, great team they were, and an amazing life after the presidency and everything they've given back to the world on, from election reform to housing. And then to close, in memory of former San Mateo County Supervisor Don Horsley. I don't know if anybody has stories, but I'm going to share the story. I used to run the Sierra Club endorsement process for three counties, and we did not endorse Supervisor Horsley, and I'm always the one that had to give the bad news. And then a few years later, I ran, and then you're calling people for endorsement, and he was ever so gracious and endorsed me. And he's just a, he also supported me at the County Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee. My mom adores him because he would come to the League of Women Voters, and he was a police officer, a sheriff deputy, but he believed in giving people second chances, in providing education and mental health services. He's just truly a loss to all of us. And so to the friends and family of Don Horsley, we are closing in memory of his great life achievements. Thank you. Adjourning at 10:1108. If I have a pen, I can sign these things?